Okay, I'd like to call this September Amherst County School Board meeting to order. If we could have a moment of silence and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call this September Amherst County School Board meeting to order. If we could have a moment of silence and stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So according to the Amherst County School Board Policy BDD, a school board member may participate from the remote location due to a medical condition or personal matters that prevents the member's physical attendance with the approval of the majority vote of the members present at the primary meeting location. In order to offer this opportunity to the remote board member, a quorum of the board must be physically present at the primary location and arrangements made and majorisms have been made for the voice to be of the remote participant to be heard by all. Do we have a quorum of the board at this time?
Yes, sir, we have a quorum.
Okay. Ms. Thompson, are you able to hear us at this time?
I can.
Okay. Seeing that we have both criteria stipulated in the Policy BDD at this time, I ask for a motion from the board that Ms. Abby Thompson be allowed to participate in this meeting remotely with all rights of discussion and voting afforded to them. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing that the ayes have it, we welcome Abby Thompson to the meeting. Abby, can you hear us well?
I can.
Okay, just making sure, okay? Okay. So...where does that put us now? Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dr. Wells, we have an agenda.
Yes, sir, thank you, members of the board, Mr. Chair members of the board. As we get started tonight, first I want to introduce our new student reps for the year, and they will speak to you more later in the meeting, but we have Mr. Asia Brown and Mr. Will Carver here with us this evening, and they are our new student reps.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair members of the board, at this time I'd like to recognize the family of Mr. Larry Hughes as Ms. Debbie Hughes present this evening. If you could come up, please. And anybody else in your family that would like to come up, that's fine too, but...
Come over here. You can stand there.
So we're here to recognize Mr. Larry Hughes. Larry was a track coach at Amherst County High School. In fact, I coached with him when I was an assistant coach with track in the early 90s, and he was an assistant, then later he took over the track program. But Larry passed away June 15th of 2024, a long battle with cancer. So we want to take a moment to recognize him tonight. He was a graduate of Amherst County High School in 1975. Again, he came back to the area and coached at the high school. He led the team to an indoor and outdoor state championship in track. And he later, when he was kind of starting to get ill from the treatments, he also worked with the Special Olympics and was the track coach, track and field coach for Special Olympics for Amherst. Again, I worked with him, great man, and surely will be missed, but I want to take this time to recognize him here in front of everybody this evening and give you our condolences. And so in honor of Mr. Hughes, we have Amherst County Public Schools' Parlor Present Certificate of Recognition to the family of Larry Hughes for his dedication as head track coach at Amherst County High School Track and Field Program and mentor to the students of Amherst County Public Schools.
Thank you so much.
I brought my children, my sister-in-law, and my daughter, and my grandchildren. My sister-in-law, and my daughter, and my grandchildren.
Y'all, come on up.
I'll put them here, she is well, after he's back, she's coming up.
Ooh, and he's going.
One, two, three. Justin, do you want to come over?
Thank you so much.
All right, we also want to recognize Sonny Merriman for their support of the Star Staff and Student of the Month, and I'm going to have Dr. Hoden come up and do that recognition.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'd like to recognize some folks from Sonny Merriman. Obviously, this is where we get our buses, but that's not why they're here tonight. They are a member of our school community in many different ways. Student of the Month, they also help us with the Ed Foundation and several scholarships that they give out through the community. We have with us tonight Mr. Kaylee Edgarly, who's the president and CEO. Got to come up. Sorry, you don't get out that easy. Mr. Brady Childers, Vice President. And Mr. Corey Compton, who is the Western Regional Sales Rep. Just like to thank them for their service in the community and for all they've done for us over the years and all that they'll continue to do. All right, next we'd like to recognize three very important ladies. The Transportation Department, and you know, we have lots of important folks, teachers, custodians, cafeteria workers, the bus drivers obviously are important. These three ladies are the big cog in that wheel to keep things going on. We have Ms. Rhonda Campbell. Ms. B. Campbell. And Ms. Pam Cash. These ladies spend countless hours before school to get our routes and all the students routed. This year, they were forced into another challenge because we had some weather. They had less time to schedule all those new students, and they did that spending many hours in that Transportation Department. So I just want to wish them a round of applause for all they do.
Mr. Chair. Get my steps in.
Arm is legging through this time. One, two, three.
Thank you, ladies.
Again, thank you, ladies, and to all the Transportation Department.
We talk about our attendance and the importance of that, but you know, two-thirds, almost three-fourths of our students wouldn't make this school every day if it wasn't for the job they do. So just want to appreciate that then how much we appreciate all the hard work that goes into it. They're on the radio at 5:30 in the morning, 5:15 in the morning, and they're on the radio at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the afternoon. So appreciate all the hard work that goes into doing what you do and your dedication and commitment to our students in our county. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, next we have our media honor roll, and this is a V SBA award, and we nominated Mr. Justin Faulkner. Justin, would you mind coming forward?
So we recognize Justin for this award, and nominate Justin for this award because he just tip, you know, he has a lot to write about, and he could choose to write about a lot of things in a negative light, but he also takes the time to ask us the questions that he needs to do the article or do the story. And regardless of what it is, you know, he gives it a fair representation. He's not here trying to move one way or the other, but he gives a fair, balanced presentation of whatever it is that's going on. So we just wanted to take the moment to recognize Justin and thank him for the way he reports on our schools and our students. So, Justin, thank you very much for that, and we hope that you'll continue writing in that manner. So now for what most of y'all are here for tonight, and I believe, is our May Student of the Month and our August Student of the Month, as well as our Staff of the Month for May and August. We'll start with Students of the Month. Just want to call your name. If you're here, please come forward. I know some couldn't be here tonight just due to all the obligations they have, but I'll read a little section about why you've chosen a Student of the Month. And I know that certificates and the gift cards, you know, that will come to the schools in about a week. We're still waiting on the gift cards to get into us from the Ed Foundation, but those will come to you with certificate and also pictures. We will take our photos of the group, parents, if you want to take pictures while they come up, that is fine. You can get individual shots, and you can get shots of the whole group too when they're up here. So feel free to take photos if you so desire. First of Amherst County High School, Cole McConnell. So Cole finished the fourth and a half weeks making the honor roll and finished with amazing grades for the 23-24 school year. In addition, Cole also had perfect attendance for the entire school year. Cole is also incredibly active in many extricular activities, including being an integral part of the Amarecos and advanced theater. Cole was also recently named a co-president of Amherst Theater for the 24-25 school year. Way to go, Cole. Thank you. For May E C, we had Victoria Peters. I don't think she was going to be with us tonight, but Victoria is kind, caring, and always willing to help other students. Victoria remains diligent in attempting to reach her goals. She has worked very hard in the GED program to get her current academic level. She does not allow obstacles to stop her or get in her way. Instead, she continues to push her way through. It is with this persistence that Victoria has been able to achieve the level of success that she has in the program. Next, we have Daniel Minter from Amherst Middle School. For many reasons, Daniel is the AMS May Star Student of the Month. He is a model student who puts fourth grade effort in class on the soccer field and on the stage. Daniel almost always has a smile on his face, and many of Daniel's peers look up to him as a positive leader. Daniel has an infectious personality, and he cares deeply about his peers and teachers. He comes to school every day to make a positive impact on those around him and on his education. Congratulations, Daniel. We look forward to watching you continue to grow in all these roles. Nelson Middle School, Cassidy Leary. Cassidy is an eighth grade student at Nelson Middle School. She is dedicated to being the best student she can be, and she demonstrates in her work ethic, attitude, and cheerful disposition. When you cross paths with Cassidy, you can always count on her positive attitude and a warm smile. Her grades are a testament to her dedication to her academic process and a strong desire to be the best student. Congratulations to Cassidy for being recognized for the Nelson Middle School Student of the Month for August. So we got you in the wrong one, but that's fine. Your August. Chandler Cook, Amalon Elementary School. Chandler is responsible, respectful, and resilient. He works hard every day. He's always quick to help others in need, and he is an outstanding leader. So congratulations to Chandler. Amherst Elementary School, Ms. Kaylee Wood. Kaylee is always there to help a classmate. She loves learning and is so enthusiastic to learn something new. She follows the rules and helps her classmates to remember them and the class procedures. Congratulations to Kaylee. Central Elementary, Madison Leary. Madison is a good citizen and sets herself apart from others around her through positive actions. In addition, she is on the A B Honor Roll and a student athlete who exhibits great student behavior. Congratulations to Madison. Eland Elementary School, Lynx Farrell. Lynx finished the 23-24 school year very strong. He made excellent growth in reading and was a role model for his peers. Lynx was always looking for ways to help and is very observant of the needs of those around him. Lynx also had perfect attendance for the 2023-24 school year. Congratulations. Masson Heights Elementary School, Elsie Loden. Okay. All right. And then Temperance Elementary School, Aleah Spivey. Aleah was chosen as the Star Student of the Month of May because she consistently demonstrates exceptional qualities in her work and behavior. Aleah is known for her hard-working attitude, always giving her best effort in every task she undertakes. She treats her classmates and teachers with the utmost respect, making her a positive role model for others. What truly sets her apart is her determination and perseverance. Even when faced with challenges, she stays focused and never gives up, showing a strong commitment to her learning and personal growth. Her dedication makes her a deserving Star Student. Congratulations. All right. I think we got everybody. All right. August. So Amherst County High School, Aubrey Carter. Aubrey has perfect attendance through the first four weeks of school and is excelling in the challenging scheduled classes. Additionally, Aubrey is a member of our Advanced Theater Arts and Amarecos teams, where she will spend this coming year in various events. Way to go, Aubrey. Amherst Middle School, Quinn Stonelake. Quinn is the AMS Student of the Month because he displays the big three on a daily basis. He is respectful to his teachers and peers and is a great role model for those around him. He is responsible in all aspects as a student at AMS. He is resilient by working hard and never giving up. He is a fantastic student, athlete, and member of the ACHS marching band. He is humble, kind, and enjoyable to be around. Congratulations. Manelso Middle School, Ruben Martinez-Amines. Ruben? Okay. Ruben is a seventh grader at Manelso Middle School. He is a hard worker, and his actions demonstrate respect and responsibility. When you mention his name around the faculty and staff at Manelso, they are quick to offer all the positive traits this young man has, and their faces immediately light up with a smile. Not to embarrass Ruben, but the teachers will quickly remind you of what a sweet young man he is. Ruben, keep doing all your great things and know that Manelso Middle School is proud of you to have you as one of our students. You make the Trojans proud. (applause) Amalon Elementary School, William Snyder. William just moved here this summer and has already taken a leadership role with his classmates. He works hard on every lesson presented to him, participates well, and encourages others to do their best. He anticipates the needs of others and is always helping to gather supplies, share his supplies, or give an encouraging word to another student. He offers to help with difficult content if a friend isn't quite understanding, and he explains his thoughts clearly during a whole group instruction as to help others with their metacognition. He is a great kid with passion for learning. Congratulations. Amherst Elementary School, Lily Brown. Lily is a pleasure to have in class. She is engaged and ready to do her work. She is kind and compassionate to her classmates and is a good friend to all. I am lucky to have her as a student, and we're lucky to have her in our schools. Congratulations to Lily. Central Elementary School, Blessing Mosby. She is a good citizen and always respectful. She exemplifies "we are Wildcats," so she is considerate, accountable. She's accountable at school and safe. She is an all-around great student and is always caring and positive. Congratulations. Eland Elementary, Andre Livy-Cousins. Livy was nominated by their school counselor, Ms. Mays, and Livy has a bright spot for Eland and is always representing what it means to be soaring eagle. She works hard, is a helper, and looks out for others around her. We are so proud to nominate her to be our Star Student of the Month for August. Congratulations. Madison Heights, Evie Worlot. Evie is an incredibly hard-working and kind individual. Her sweet nature shines through in every interaction, making her a friend to all. We are so lucky to have her represent our school with this very special honor. Awesome job, Evie. Congratulations. Temperance Elementary School, Malachi Humphrey. Malachi comes to class every day with a smile on his face and ready to learn. He stays on task and works very hard on assignments that are given to him. Malachi is also very kind to his classmates. He is an absolute pleasure to have in class. And that was it for August. All right. Let's slide over to the middle. (laughter) All right. Now it's staff. So students, parents, if y'all want to leave, you're more than welcome to. Or you can stay for the evening, whatever you prefer.
Oh, they're saying hi to their principals. Isn't that sweet?
Our staff for May. From Amherst County High School, Ms. Tara Hotelling. Again, for staff, we'll have your certificates and your gift cards to you next week, so don't stress. You'll get it. So Ms. Hotelling goes above and beyond for her students each and every day. She not only works hard to ensure her students are receiving a quality education in the classroom, she also sponsors many extracurricular activities. Just recently, many students were searching for sponsors to stay after school to supervise them as they practice the One Act plays, and Ms. Hotelling volunteered to be that person for many groups. Additionally, she always makes sure that her students have a special day on their birthday by purchasing balloons to give to them. Thank you, Ms. Hotelling. Amherst Education Center, Ms. Barbara White. I don't think she is with us this evening. But Ms. Barbara makes the best of coming across the parking lot with her rack of food. Remember, AEC, they get their food from, we bring it over from Manelso for those students. She serves it up quick and hot, but most importantly, she gets to know our kids and treats them well. She knows everyone's names and uses them. She builds a good rapport with the students, but she also addresses them in their manners when they are in line. She is a benefit to AEC, and the students have learned to respect her. What impresses us most is that she knows each student's food preferences, which she tells me and takes time to get to know our students and makes the connection with them. So congratulations to Ms. White. Amherst Middle School, Melissa Martin. Melissa is the AMS Star Staff of the Month for May. Ms. Martin is one of the hardest-working people in the building. She took on many different roles this year due to challenging circumstances beyond her control. She submitted all of her responsibilities in her role as bed teacher, as well as managing many of the responsibilities of a seventh-grade reading and English classroom. She continued to provide all the students in those classes a great education during the transition of hiring a new language arts teacher. When we were unable to do so, she became a great leader and mentor to the long-term substitute that filled in the position for the remainder of the school year. Throughout this whole process, she remained positive and kept the students as her main focus. Ms. Martin displayed much resilience and perseverance throughout the school year and tackled all the challenges head-on with a positive attitude. Thank you, Ms. Martin, for your exceptional attitude and leadership during the 23-24 school year. Thank you. Manelso Middle School, Ms. Gina Simmons. Ms. Simmons is a fantastic part of the Manelso Middle School team, and she seeks to support students in every way possible. Along with supporting the guidance department, she is very active in providing love and caring for our students. She goes above and beyond to help faculty, staff, and students and parents. Manelso Middle School is fortunate to have such an outstanding school counselor/secretary. Thank you, Ms. Simmons, and congratulations on being recognized as the Star Staff of the Month for May. Amalon Elementary, Mr. Charles Braxton. I don't think he's here this evening. Mr. Braxton is the first one there each morning. He is always positive and smiling. He is the best encourager and loves everyone. He never forgets a birthday or anniversary, and my children still get cards from him when he was at Amherst Elementary School. And they're in their twenties. All right. But with all the students in the building, excuse me, but anniversary, sharing cards, puzzles, and a treat, we love Mr. Braxton's dedication to the Pittsburgh Steelers and is one of the best custodians here. So congratulations, Mr. Braxton. Amherst Elementary School, Ms. Kim Davis. Kim is always willing to jump in wherever and whenever she is needed. She shows her caring nature to the students she works with, with all the students in the building. Kim always has a smile on her face, never complains, and is happy to help out. We are truly thankful for her being here. Congratulations. Central Elementary School, Ms. Bobby Hamlet. When are we doing our milk mustaches again? When is that? In two weeks? September 25th. September 25th. All right. Ms. Hamlet affectionately understands Ms. Bobby, is kind and outgoing. Also, she learns every student's name, their likes and dislikes, follows nutrition guidelines, and encourages everyone to make good choices. And I'll add to this, she always invites me over for the milk mustache and the bite the apple and whatever other. I get to go help serve breakfast and lunch, so it's great to be able to go to the schools and do that. So, thank you. Mr. Chad is always ensuring students have a safe and welcoming environment at Eland. He works hard to build relationships and participated in their end-of-year incentives for students by getting in the dunking booth. Additionally, he works to ensure all the small things teachers and students need are available, whether it's fixing broken desks or painting. And I must say that the school this year looks great up there at Eland, so thank you very much for all the work you did. Temperance Elementary School, Ms. Carrie Fleming. Ms. Fleming has given many years of service to education. We're thankful and grateful that her final home as a teacher was northern Temperance Elementary. She had an amazing way with the students and was a consummate professional. Never once did we have to worry about Ms. Fleming not being prepared for classes or any of her other duties. I can truthfully say that every parent was thankful for their children's time in her classroom. Congratulations. And I hope you're enjoying retirement. Transportation, Ms. Betty Cash. Not with us? Okay. That's right. She retired too. That's why she's not here. She's been a driver for 29 years. During those 29 years, she eagerly carried the students for Amherst County High School and Amherst Middle School in Temperance. Ms. Cash is inspiration to many for her dedication, who has only missed one day during the six years, during the previous six years. She had a mild and calm voice to her patients with the little ones. Back in the fall, we had to make some changes to accommodate the loss of a driver in the Temperance area. Ms. Cash, without any hesitation, incorporated this new route into her own. Not with that reserve, but she made it work. Ms. Cash is one of the elite drivers for the Temperance area, being one of only four drivers for Temperance Elementary. They're always willing to jump in and cover each other no matter what, but we wish her the best in her retirement. And then from the school administration office, Ms. Robin Wheeler. And I don't think Robin's with us this evening either. But over the past several months, Robin was the pivotal in preparing our division for the upcoming implementation of the Literacy Act and the development of the division's literacy plan. Her forward-thinking approach, meticulous planning, and collaborative spirit have been crucial in laying out the essential groundwork that will allow our division to fully meet the requirements of this legislation. So we thank Robin for all she's done and wish her the best. Thank you, Robin. That was May. All right. August, Amherst County High School, Scholar Andrick. Scholar has gone above and beyond this school year. In addition to teaching her five classes, Ms. Andrick is also leading Domain Four at Amherst County High School. Ms. Andrick has also become a 504 case manager, where she assists over 50 students with their 504 plans. Ms. Andrick is a true team player and is the example for what we want to be in Elanzer. Congratulations. Amherst Middle School, Alyssa Nugarris. Ms. Nugarris is the AMS Staff of the Month because of the impact she's already made on the students, staff, and school. She volunteered a tremendous amount of her own time to clean the stage and auditorium office area this summer into August. The auditorium and stage look like a new addition to the school. She has an infectious positive attitude that brightens your day when around her. She is willing to help when needed and has filled in multiple positions while others have been absent. We had two new EL students enroll after the start of the school, and she has been instrumental in helping the students and families transition into AMS. She volunteers her time to conduct an after-school choir club, help with the marching band, and has also helped with some translating at Amalon Elementary School. Ms. Nugarris has been an outstanding addition to the AMS family, and we are proud to say she is the August Staff Member of the Month. Congratulations. Manelso Middle, Mr. Heath Cockerham. And he is the Dean of Students at Manelso. Manelso Middle School is fortunate to have Mr. Cockerham as a member of the Manelso Middle School team. He goes above and beyond to establish positive relationships with every colleague, student, and parent he meets. Mr. Cockerham is dedicated to our students and their families and will go the extra mile to support student success. His reflective practices and growth mindset always ensure that every student has the ability and support to do their best. Congratulations to Mr. Cockerham and a big thank you for all he does from Manelso Middle School. Amalon Elementary School, Ms. Jennifer Edmonds. Ms. Edmonds is a speech-language pathologist, but she's always helping out and doing for others. Jen goes above and beyond for the students. She's always giving advice on new things to try with students. She leads the IST Committee and works hard every day for every child, and she's always such a positive, I'll say this when I go down there, always has a very positive influence and very engaged with everything going on in the school, so thank you for all you do. Amherst Elementary School, Ms. Jennifer Johnson. Ms. Johnson's expertise in reading has been an invaluable asset as we embark on the new school year. Her knowledge of recent initiatives include- and we are proud to say she is the August Staff Member of the Month. Congratulations. Manelso Middle, Mr. Heath Cockerham. And he is the Dean of Students at Manelso. Manelso Middle School is fortunate to have Mr. Cockerham as a member of the Manelso Middle School team. He goes above and beyond to establish positive relationships with every colleague, student, and parent he meets. Mr. Cockerham is dedicated to our students and their families and will go the extra mile to support student success. He's, his reflective practices and growth mindset always ensure that every student has the ability and support to do their best. Congratulations to Mr. Cockerham and a big thank you for all he does from Manelso Middle School. Amalon Elementary School, Ms. Jennifer Edmonds. Ms. Edmonds is a speech-language pathologist, but she's always helping out and doing for others. Jen goes above and beyond for the students. She's always giving advice on new things to try with students. She leads the IST Committee and works hard every day for every child, and she's always such a positive, I'll say this when I go down there, always has a very positive influence and very engaged with everything going on in the school. So thank you for all you do. Amherst Elementary School, Ms. Jennifer Johnson. Ms. Johnson's expertise in reading has been an invaluable asset as we embark on the new school year. Her knowledge of recent initiatives, including the Junior Literacy Act, open court, and VOWS assessments, has been instrumental in guiding our teachers through these changes. By taking the time to thoroughly explain these new tools, she has ensured that our educators are well-prepared. Ms. Johnson has taken on additional roles in the building, such as leading Domain Three for our school support team. Ms. Johnson's commitment to these efforts is constantly driven by her focus on the students' best interests. Congratulations. Central Elementary, Samantha McCormick. Ms. McCormick is constantly looking out for the welfare of all of her students. She is always caring, kind, and engaging. Ms. McCormick consistently goes the extra mile to meet the needs of her students. Thank you. Congratulations. Eland Elementary School, Ms. Missy Gilbert. Not here? Okay. Ms. Gilbert, Child Nutrition Manager at Eland, is Staff of the Month. Ms. She works hard to ensure the students have healthy lunches. She partners with teachers to help students learn their lunch numbers and the processes of the cafeteria. This month, she and her colleagues set a cafeteria incentive where four classes will recognize for soaring for their cafeteria behavior. Congratulations to Missy. Madison Heights, Jessica Harris. No? Okay. Ms. Harris puts her heart into everything she does for her students. She works tirelessly every day to meet their individual needs, always ensuring they feel supported and encouraged. Her loving and compassionate nature creates a nurturing classroom environment where every student feels valued. She has an incredible ability to see the best in each student, helping them grow both academically and personally. Her committed and positive, her commitment and positivity make her an inspiration to both her students and colleagues. We are so lucky to have her as part of the school community. Congratulations. Temperance Elementary, Ms. Dottie Ramsey. Congratulations. AMS Janice Tomlin. Get you both at the same time. And they, they're both in the Child Nutrition Office and cafeteria there. Congratulations. Well, this is what we're covering this month of August. There isn't a day that goes by that both of these employees don't give their absolute all in everything they do. Regardless of whatever initiative that may come from the state, they implement it at full speed ahead. I can honestly say that the food that comes out of the kitchen at Temperance is the best cafeteria food that I've ever been a part of. Some of y'all might want to argue about that, but... But I will say when I go up there, there's, there's good, the food is good. So we want to thank you for all you do, make sure those students that they get what they need to be successful. So thank you. And then from the school administration office, Ms. Sue Drumgardner. Sue couldn't be here tonight, but she is an accounting specialist in her finance department. And the past couple of months, we've had a lot of work trying to get done to make sure everybody gets paid on time and gets paid the right amount of money. And what she's done has really been valuable in making sure that happened. So she is a valuable team member. She has a heart for our employees and goes above and beyond to make sure that everyone is taken care of. During a staffing transition, Sue was an integral part of not only creating efficient processes, but keeping the whole team together and focused. Sue is always willing to offer assistance when there is need and does whatever is needed in order to get the job done. We're incredibly fortunate to have her as part of our team. Thank you for all you do.
Public hearing is next.
Yeah. So moving on, next to 3.0, public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the school board concerning the Children's Internet Protection Act may do so at this time. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to approach the school board? Okay?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public comments, 4.0. We have a couple of people signed up. Mr. Porter, would you like to come, approach the board, please?
I don't know. Thank you.
I am Jeff Porter, 478 Woodies Lake Road, Madison Heights, Virginia. School Board, I'm here to speak to you concerning Item 4, Item 5.01, Memorandum B. Before you, I have some wording that I would recommend for you to, to consider as you look at that memorandum this evening. I believe that it's important to make it as, to make those who want to speak out of public comment as accessible as possible. And I think by listing the four different ways of how to do that would be very helpful, not only in the policy, but also in, in the words that are used concerning public comment and in the agenda. I think that with the efforts that have been made to, to bring in the public by having what we have just gone through with, with recognitions, I think that's important. But I also think that it's important for us to be very clear of the different ways that people can participate. And I would encourage you to consider these ways as you talk about Memorandum B. I understand that this is primarily dealing with students, but I think that since you all are looking at it, this might be an opportune time for you as well. The final comment that I would like to make this evening is I am very grateful for your IT man, for how he sets up the microphones so that those of us who need, need clarity can hear what's being said. He has worked long and tirelessly to make sure that that happens, and I am so grateful for his efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And next, there's one that I'm having a hard time reading. I'm going to move on to the next couple, and then we'll come back to that one. So the next one looks like it's Catherine Beck. Is there Catherine Beck?
She was here, so she's on.
Okay. After that, there was a Kathy Beck, it looks as if. Got you. And then it looks like it was a child's handwriting after that, right before that. So I'm assuming that, but anyone else here who would like to approach the board, please do so now. Okay? Well, seeing none, we will move on. 5.0.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, before you, you have the recommendations from the Policy Committee. Memo A, those policies, there were no changes. This is to the initial recommendations that came. I'm just talking into it. And then Memo B did have some recommended changes. And I don't know if Ms. Justice or Ms. Thompson would like to address the board on the Policy Committee discussion or if you'd just like me to take the lead, so...
Ms. Thompson or Ms. Justice, would y'all like to discuss the changes? Or would you like Dr. Wells to do it?
I'm happy to make just a couple of comments, but I will welcome Dr. Wells or Mrs. Justice if they have any additions to it. In Memorandum B, we were looking at Policy BDDH, and it was including student participation based on update to Virginia law. And we were looking at it, trying to see if the policy was inclusive enough. And we felt like we wanted to include, intentionally include mentioning staff so that it didn't look like that we were excluding them. So I think that the, the language there pretty much just adds that and inserts it. This was also the one that Mr. Porter had mentioned about possibly updating how our public would interact with us or sign up. That was something that we had just briefly discussed as a committee. We didn't go into any detail. I think if it was the board's pleasure, and they are in agreement with what we are presenting tonight for BDDH, that, that is a good start. And then if the board is interested, then they could consider updating, you know, a little bit more detail, like Mr. Porter has suggested, with giving public more guidance. That's something we could do at a different time. But I do appreciate Mr. Porter's input on that, and we did briefly discuss that. So I don't know if there's any other additions for BDDH or any questions on that one.
Okay. Board, any other questions? Okay. Okay.
And then for Policy EB, that was also to update Virginia code. And the purpose of that was to make sure that students with mobility impairments, that they could exit during an emergency or during drills with their peers. One of the concerns that we had was to make sure that whoever was implementing and creating those plans, which I think we do a great job at that in our, in our division, it was to make sure that we wanted the folks that are looking at our policy to know that we valued safety. So for that reason, we just wanted to insert that one word, which just goes above and beyond. It meets the letter of the new law, but also just make sure that we are looking after the safety of all of our students. And then Policy GC was one on teacher licensures, and it's a pretty lengthy policy. The reason that this was, I recommended bringing this one to the board was just for accountability. There is a, Dr. Wells, you correct me if I'm wrong. I think there's a three-year provisional license that can be extended for one to two years for teachers who are not fully licensed in the state of Virginia. And that would make a teacher who could be in the classroom for five years under a provisional. And then this policy would also add an extra year for local licensure. And I know that part of the rationale for that is that there's teacher shortage, and Dr. Wells can speak probably more appropriate to how this can be used, especially in our CTE classrooms. But the concern that we had was that we could possibly have teachers within our classrooms for six years without having a full Virginia teaching license with only a 5% cap on the one-year local. So we felt like we wanted to just insert language so that we would have some accountability to the board as well as to the public as to how, what percentage of our teachers fall within these categories. And I think it has been placed appropriately that we're recommending to report this to the board in January because that gives licensure time to trickle down from the Virginia Department of Education, let all of those things get documented. But it also allows us to look at the numbers that we have within these categories prior to hiring. So that was the only change that we were recommending there.
Okay. Thank you, Ab. Anything else, board? Anything else, Ms. Thompson?
That's all I had.
Okay.
So from us, it would just be the recommendation that you approve as, as noted. So you'd have to do Memo A. You can do them both together, say Memo A and Memo B, policies listed, and approve both, or you can separate them out, whichever way you prefer.
Okay. Board, your preference? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I moved that we go ahead and approve Memorandum A and Memorandum B as presented.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Okay. Dr. Wells?
So in July, we had Policy GCL, which we had to pull before, because GC had to be approved before we could approve GCL. So if you would like, I can bring GCL to you back. You've already had it as a first read, but because GC wasn't approved, we couldn't approve GCL. So in October, I'll bring GCL back to you as a second read, just for the, because we had to do GC before we could approve GCL.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to 6.0.
So 6.0 is the Best Labs, and we have Dr. Patrón and Mr. Neighbors who are going to lead that discussion on that, and I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Before we invite Dr. David Smith up to speak to y'all this evening, Dr. Patrón and I, who have been collaborating significantly on this project, wanted to provide a little bit of background and context to how we got to this point and why we feel like the Best Lab is our good option going forward. But I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Patrón to take us down memory lane a little bit this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Neighbors. So if you guys want to think back a couple of years, like 2017 and before, we had a wonderful service in our schools called Day Treatment. It was working really well. We had about 130 students receiving that service. It was fully funded through Medicaid, so the provider that was doing it billed that child's insurance to receive reimbursement, and it was being reimbursed at a rate where at that time, they could give us pro bono spots. So when we had students who had private insurance and needed services, they were able to access that at no cost to the school division. Fast forward a little bit, some changes happened in the state, specifically with Medicaid. And in 2019, we started getting students denied for Day Treatment. Then we started getting students who were approved, but not approved at the same rate. So we started to see providers around the state say, "We're not going to provide the service anymore because it's not lucrative." So COVID then happened, and some funding came into the state and into the schools, and we made do for a while. We continued to do Day Treatment services, and we changed providers twice because in two years, we had two providers discontinue services for the same reason that I'm explaining, the lack of sustainability. At that point, the board approved $65,000 in operational funds to help us with Day Treatment, and that was paying for students who did not have Medicaid and maybe had private insurance or their Medicaid had denied the services. We were very grateful for that funding. It helped a lot of students. And we, we continue to appreciate that the board supports all of the mental health services and that you guys have made it a budget priority when we've discussed it. But we knew at that point, Day Treatment wasn't going to last, that it was a dying breed. And you'll recall us talking about this with legislators when they came to visit. We, we kept bringing this up and trying to make everybody aware that we were having these issues. And I do sort of feel like the state listened because in 2023, they opened up the school-based mental health grant. And that's when we applied, and we were awarded $319,000. But then the state had a delay in approving their budget, so we couldn't access that money till March, and it all had to be spent by June. So we did our best, and we gave as many kids services as we could. And the state again listened. And on July 1st, we got a block grant for $108,000. The continued services... And on July 1st, we got a block grant for $108,000, the continued services from July 1st to September 30th of this year. So that will expire in a few days. We've done a lot of really good things with that block grant. We have provided crisis services. We have contracted for ABA behavioral services. We did a lot with that. And now on October 1st, we're going to get another block grant for $108,000. That's going to continue until June 30th of 2025, which is great. And in addition, the state has said that they're going to give us carryover funds from the school-based mental health grant that was not spent. But the way they're going to do it is they're going to take all of the unspent money in the state and reallocate it, so we don't yet know how much that is going to be. We anticipate that being a significant chunk of money, upwards of $300,000 again, but we don't have a guarantee on that. So one of the things that we are doing with that is we are contracting for some mental health services. We still continue to have outpatient therapy and crisis services available to all of our students. You're going to hear about the best labs in just a minute, and that is not funded through the school-based mental health grant because it can only pay for contracted services. But in addition to the best labs, we are also paying for contracted services at Amherst County High School. So that contract that we entered into is with Impact Living Services. It's for $80,000 for them to give us one clinician, and that clinician can serve up to 10 students. So you could see mental health services are expensive. So as that's going on, we have the best labs, which you're going to hear about in a second. I'm not trying to steal anybody's thunder, but that'll be at five schools. We're hopeful that with the school-based mental health grant that we're going to get the carryover funds for, that we can put Impact Living Services in two more schools. So that would mean eight schools would have daily support available to them, and all of our schools will continue to have outpatient therapy and crisis services available to them, as well as the ABA behavioral services that we're contracting with. So that is the history of school-based mental health services, and I'll turn it back to Mr. Neighbors.
Yes, Dr. Patrone has been busy for quite some time with getting all those things in place. So earlier this year in January, we were fortunate enough to be able to bring Dr. David Smith on board, who has been working feverishly since that point to support our staff in classes, working with students, but ultimately tried to reshape some of the culture of how we approach behavior, the structure of the interventions we're putting into place, and really being that very valuable and needed technical assistance to our staff, to our administration in the building. And I really can't thank him enough for the work that he's done in his short time here in Amherst. A part of this, and looking forward to the future, is really building programs, and best lab is that. And the spring of '24, we were fortunate to be invited up to Fluvana County to observe in all of their schools, a best lab program that they have implemented. The data was staggering in regards to the amount of referrals that they did not have, that they previously did, so massive 60%, 70% reductions in referrals in some of their school buildings, which obviously piqued our interest. We wanted to know more, is why we went to actually see what that looked like. And we have shamelessly stolen the vast majority of those resources and structures from them. They've been a wonderful partner, and Dr. Smith has actually collaborated a great deal with staff in that division in the development of this program. So that is unusual for us to have not only a willing partner, but also a proven track record of success with a program like this. We were able to launch at the beginning of the year at Madison Heights Central as well as AEC. We're bringing Amalon online, looking at how we're going to continue to expand that in the future. Manellison would be our next targeted school. And Dr. Patrone and I have had a significant amount of conversation around our data and where that staff is going to make the most difference in those schools and why those five were initially targeted. The good news is, looking at the budgetary requirements of those positions, we're able to do that within the money that had previously been allocated for day treatment services. Some of that was from operational budget, some of it was from my 6B grant, as well as a little bit of additive. We appreciate Dr. Norman from our school community grant as well, so able to cover that within those existing funds that we'd utilized previously for day treatment with a little bit of help from Dr. Norman as well. Again, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but I'm just so excited, I can't wait to share. So in the 13 school days in August, beginning August 14th through the end, the best labs at just those three sites, Madison Heights Central and AEC, were able to serve 17 students for a total of 66 visits over those 13 days. So a substantial amount of support provided to more students than we typically would have been able to serve with those 10 slots under our previous agreement with day treatment. So already seeing some excellent early returns with that program. He let me know that as of today, that's up to 198 visits at our four sites. So we're getting a lot of time with students that need that support, where they don't have that necessarily in the classroom, but needed to be successful in that environment. Again, I feel like we're being long-winded here, but not to delay Dr. Smith any further. I do want to emphasize what Dr. Patrone said. We do see best lab as a part of a bigger system. We want to make sure that we're providing what's necessary for our students and our families. The best lab is an important piece of that, but certainly not the only piece of that. But very excited about where we are and where we look to go. Without further ado, I'm going to bring Dr. David Smith up to the podium to give you all a little more of the nitty-gritty about what best lab looks like day to day.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Neighbors. Pleasure to be here tonight, guys. This is an exciting time for us. It's just one thing that we're doing, and it's one thing that's working well so far. So the data he's speaking of, we're collecting data. Can I talk into a little more? Okay, that's fine. The data we're collecting, we're collecting data, and each time a student comes to the lab, each time we assist a student, we're also doing different things like that. So the data is going to be able to be presented to you throughout the time that we have the best labs open. So I want to do a rhetorical question really quick. I'm not going to make this long. It's going to be a short presentation, because I know we all want to go home, right? So what is best to you? Rhetorical. Think about what, how do you define best for yourself? A little taller, I'm going to put it up a little higher. So define that. So when I'm thinking about best for our students, sometimes our students are doing the best they can with what they have. So we've got to teach them to do better, and when they learn to do better, that becomes their new best. So that's sort of what I was watching in Olympics and watching football. I look at different athletes, and I'm like, think about when they were young. What was their best then, and what is their best now? So providing that support to the students behaviorally, educationally, support in general, in transition, is what the best lab's for. That's the acronym. That's what best stands for. Behaviorally, educationally, support in transition. So that's our goal. It's not to meet the students where they're at, they're doing the best they can with what they have, teach them to do better. When they learn to do better, it becomes their new best. Okay? All right, so I guess we'll go to the next slide. I'm sorry.
Just be sure and speak with Mike.
Yeah, I got to speak with Mike. I got it. So, all right, so we're going to go right here. It's going to be behavioral. So you're looking at kids. So what is a behavior? Behavior is a form of communication. So they're communicating something to us, so we need to figure out what they're trying to say. And a lot of that goes back to the functions of behavior. I'm not going to go through the whole spiel of all that tonight, but behaviorally, educationally, we need to teach executive functioning skills to our students. And we can provide that in the lab, too. So if a student needs to come out and take a test in a quiet environment, that's something that we can provide as well. We provide those resources for our students. Support, provide our students the assistance to be able to help them build and maintain positive relationships, and teaching them how to manage their responses, behaviors and response to difficult situations. And also provide support for our teachers and our administrators. So that's another big avenue there. And transitions, a lot of our students struggle with transitions. Transitions from class to class, transitions from grade to grade. So this helps them provide that, and we'll, I'll talk more about some of the ways we can do that. But we have like a check-in and checkout type system, so they can come in and check out, and they'll have goals that they can work on. But I'll go through some of those in a second, okay? So here's some of the ways that we can do that through our best lab. Initially, we have to have a referral. So we have a referral process where the teachers or the administrators will refer the students to us, so we can get a better understanding of what they're looking for and what the students' needs are. So when we do that, we can set up breaks, scheduled or unscheduled. So a lot of our students now are doing, will work for a particular time and then get a break later, or they're check-in and checkout type systems. And we're using zones of regulation for support. So we're teaching our students what zones of regulations are to help them be able to support themselves in the classroom environment. And we're also providing that support to the teachers across the board as well with that. Social skill supports, some of our students struggle with social skills, so we're providing that either individually and in groups. So we're going to eventually go to the group setting. We're doing it individually now, and then we'll add more groups as we continue to progress and see what each school needs. So we're basing it on the school's needs and the individual's needs. It's not an all-inclusive thing. It's going to be something that we can look at individually. Assistance during independent work time, that's what I was talking about. So if a student needs to come out and work better in a quieter environment, we can provide it as well in that type of setting. So after initial request, teachers can request a staffing for any student they feel needs support in the future. So now they're referred. So now it's our time, right? So once they're referred through a staffing, scheduled or unscheduled breaks can be set up through the best lab. So that's what we are looking at doing now. We have several students that are doing check-ins in the morning and check-outs at the end of the day, and we see them two to three times a day. And what they'll do is they'll bring their card with them, and they'll have three goals. Three goals that we've come up with, and they'll have a goal there for themselves, because I think it's important for students to have goals for themselves. You know, we can always define what we want, but we need to let the student define what they see, too, because sometimes they think, see things different. Sometimes they're harder on themselves than we are. So we have a spot for them to define their own goal for that day, and then we check in with them, and the teachers have a spot to fill it out how they did, and they have a wow moment. So they have wow things that they can put at the bottom, and the spectacular things they do throughout the day. It's all, can be used for students who are disruptive, and now responding in class redirection, problem-solving and other strategies. Use for students who are clearly overwhelmed, escalated, and need a break to regroup. Use for students who need immediate attentional support that is unable to provide it at that time. So we have, when we first started, we were in the classrooms. I told the staff that I want you in the classrooms, I want you to be seen, I want you to get to know our students, because without a relationship, without building that relationship, it's, you're not going to get anywhere with our students. So they were in the classrooms, they built relationships with these, the students. They're reaping the benefits of that now. We've got several, I've talked to administrators in each one of the buildings, they are thrilled with what they're seeing. Because with day treatment before, it was, they had to do a certain amount of time. They had to have this amount of time, they could only do this thing, and they had to be seen in different things. This is something that's in-house, and we can design it what truly meets our students' needs. And with day treatment, it was more designed to meet the regulations. So this is more, it's better for our students and better for our schools, in my opinion, because I've been out there, I've done day treatment, I know the ins and outs of it, I've run those type of programs, and this is something that I think is more beneficial for, in the long run, for all of our students and schools. Okay? All right. Best lab staff administration, counselors or another adult will pick up the student up and take them to their break. So basically, they are taken to their break, and then they're, the best lab staff will take them back or call for someone to come pick them up. So scheduled or unscheduled, they're brought to the, to the particular lab. So coming for a scheduled break, staff will assist them with using a timer and choosing a break activity. The reason we use a timer is because we don't want this to be an all-day thing. So it should be a matter of about 15 minutes, no more than 30, and then they should be able to return to class. Our goal is 15 or minutes or less. And the data we collect is when the student comes in, the staff signs them in in the computer, and then they put the time that they're there and the time that they left, and also the grade that they're in and so forth. So basically, so what I've noticed is certain times of the day, from the data I looked at, that are more relevant for our kids, that our struggles and certain grade levels are higher right now. But part of that is because we're only doing elementary schools and then AEC. But that's just some of the data that we can collect and figure out what, how to benefit our schools and students more. For unscheduled breaks, students will choose an activity to help them cool down if needed. Students will process their problems, solve the problem with staff. So when they come in, if you're riled up or you're upset, we're giving them a chance to do something that they enjoy, something to calm down. And then the next component is they will do a zones of regulations or something with that staff to work on what they're doing. We have a triggers assessment we're utilizing, and some other forms that we use as well, and a preference assessment to understand what the student is like and dislike. So it starts off by letting them control, get their emotions under control, and then we start after that with some of the zones of regulation, some of the other things we're utilizing. And again, this biggest key to this, this is not a punishment, it is not used lies for discipline. That's the biggest key. We don't want this to be a punishment for our students. We want this to be a resource for our students and our staff and our administrators, for our students to learn to be able to be successful inside and outside of the classroom setting. So that's, that's our goal about providing the service. So educational supports, what can we do there? We can provide basic skills practice. We can provide problem-solving for difficult assignments. Because that's what I had at AEC, I had a teacher come in there when I was with my best lab staff. They're like, he's been out for a couple of weeks, and he's, he's struggling because he doesn't, he's behind the other students, and he's getting embarrassed. Can he come in here and work in here, and we can get him caught up? And yes, we did, and he's, he's done very well since then, because he's been out for a while, and he was getting embarrassed, and he was getting in trouble because he didn't want to seem like he didn't know something. So providing that extra support is something that's important for our kids and our students. Quiet place to work or test, we can provide that. Assistance with independent work time. This is what I was referring to, behavior supports, check-in and check-outs. This is the biggest thing that I'll, that I like that we're doing, because we're checking in with our students throughout the day. We're finding out where they're at, and they're having the goals. Like I said, they'll have the three goals that we provide, and then the one goal that they do, and then we'll check, you know, and see how they're doing through, and talk to the teachers. We got it, we can't just do it in one setting. So we're generalizing it across settings to the teachers. So everything we're doing here, we're going to, we're working with our teachers on as well, so they can utilize that in the classroom, so the students can be successful in all settings. So group skills building is one of the things we'll be working on as well. We haven't gotten into groups as much yet. Scheduled and structured breaks, identification of triggers, that's what I'm talking about, the trigger assessment. So we got to figure out what causes our students angst, or what's causing those issues for our students. Self-assessment and problem-solving, individual behavior plans, social problem-solving and teaching coping skills and cooldown techniques. So, all right, the groups, we're going to be doing, would be zones of regulation, that's one of the things that we'll do individually and as a group with students that are on the same levels. And a check-in, check-out, AM, PM check-ins and check-ins throughout the day as well. So that's going to be brief and short. I could go in a lot more detail, but we won't do that today. We won't waste any more of your time, which is very valuable. So do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Childers?
Yeah, so love the program. You know, the, it's a difficult time, you know, when, you know, programs that we depended on are no longer there, and it seems that more and more of our students need those services. So I was kind of curious, could you go into a little bit more detail about what a break consists of, and who determines when it's needed?
Depending on a break, you're considered unscheduled and scheduled, okay? Scheduled breaks will be determined by the teacher and the best lab staff. So if they meet a certain criteria, they've done a certain thing, some of our students want to work to go to the best lab, which we, in our elementary school, which is a great thing. So they'll have to do certain things to get there. The unscheduled breaks are breaks where the student may be struggling, and they can be sent there by the teacher or administration. So that's what the two differences are.
So a scheduled break is kind of a reward, it sounds like.
To a point. Yes, sir.
To encourage them for good behavior, those type of things. Unscheduled may be like a timeout kind of thing?
It could be a timeout. It's a chance to reflect and figure out what they could do better moving forward. And also, scheduled breaks are also times where the student may be struggling. So if it's a certain period of time, if we know that they're struggling at the beginning of a class, the transition piece, or in the mornings, that can still be a scheduled break. It can be times that we noticed and the teachers have noticed that the students are struggling, because that's what we're doing with one of our students at AEC. He struggles being in the cafeteria and other people because of the loud environment. So he comes in that setting, which is a scheduled break, but it's something that provides him the support he needs and provides him the place that he needs to be successful. And that, hopefully I answered your question.
He did, yes. The only other question I have is, are there any concerns about students maybe potentially abusing the breaks, and that I don't want to be in a classroom, so I'm going to be disruptive, so I can go and have quiet time?
That's a great question, and honestly, it could happen, and I'm not saying it won't happen. Right now, we're scheduling it so they're about 15-minute breaks, so if it does happen, it's not going to be, it's not going to affect the program that much. But yes, it could happen. I don't see where it's happened yet. Our students do like coming there, some of them do, but they're working to do it, to get there. They're doing the things that they need to get there. They're just not given that opportunity for scheduled breaks. So they're doing the first this, then this, because we had Because we had some students who weren't doing anything in class, now they're actually working, they're completing assignments, they're staying in the classroom. So we've seen great progress. But yes, anything can be, anything out there, we can, somebody can take advantage of.
And if I could jump in there as well, I think that was one of the pieces that we appreciated about this particular program, the data collection component. There's almost a built-in, I shouldn't say almost, there is a built-in accountability system there, where it's not just the Best Lab Staff and David, the administrator has access to that. So we started to see that trend, that Josh is maybe liking that a little too much, we're seeing some negative behaviors on the other side. That's where that staffing comes in, and we team it up. But that data has really been essential to making sure that we can actually monitor whether or not that's happening.
The form I'm using pretty much tracks the time they're in there, the time that they leave, the times there throughout the day, and also the percentage of times that they've used the lab. So all those things can come into play to determine if they are taking advantage, or truly when they do need it, maybe we can do a scheduled break. So if we're seeing that 11:30 after lunch that this student struggles a whole lot, so why not provide them that opportunity to come to a setting where we can get them refocused and return to the class and be successful for the rest of the day?
And I'll just say, I think probably one of the most important things that you said for me was hearing the relationship piece.
Yes.
You know, a lot of these kids, you know, trying to make that connection can make all the difference in the world for those kids to, you know, allow them that opportunity to connect, but then also to settle down.
Definitely. And that's the biggest key with us, is building relationships. And I think that's why it can be a very successful program. And it started being successful since we, we've started it, so. And good staff, of course, that, that are in those, those areas. So.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Ms. Justice, go ahead.
Dr. Smith, how many staff do you have in your program? And is it per school, or?
Currently, we are serving four schools, and we have four staff. So we have one for each school. I would love to see it go across the board, our administrators at the schools are like, hey, we want the Best Lab here, we want this here, we, you know, but we're doing the best we can with the resources we currently have. So we have four students and four staff, I mean, four staff at four schools, sorry about that.
So, and if you have one staff, then is there another school personnel that's in the classroom with those support, not the classroom, but in the lab? Or is it just one adult in the lab?
Right now, we only have one adult.
Okay.
For those schools. And they're in the lab, they're in the school, they're in the classes as well. So it, we're doing what we can with what we have.
I was gonna say, it sounds like you're being highly efficient.
We're trying to do everything we can with what's available, so.
That's awesome, servicing four schools with four staff. Thank you very much.
No problem, thank you all.
Legan, you have something?
Well, no, I like everything. I just, this is a dear subject to me, I think everybody kinda knows how I'm dealing with these sort of things. So are you kinda replacing, for a better word, day treatment?
Well, you can call it replacing.
Oh, what is, I mean?
It was called, it was day treatment, basically, the state has done away with day treatment completely.
I know that, but are you?
We, you could call it replacing, I call it making it better.
Okay.
Because what we're doing is something that day treatment wasn't doing. Day treatment was providing a service for, they had to have two hours, they had to have this, they had to have that. And they're taking away time that these kids were, should be in a learning education, should be in the classrooms. That time was outside of the setting, and that's what TDT was doing, is basically, they had to have their two hours to get their money, to be totally honest with you, that's sort of what it, what it was. And we're not doing that. We're doing 15-minute increments, providing support to the classrooms, and teaching these teachers what we're doing in that setting. And that's something TDT was not doing neither. So we're, I think this is a better plan than what TDT is. I'm not taking away from TDT, because I'm very familiar with that, I've been in charge of those type of programs as well. But this is something I think can be more beneficial across the board for our students, it's something that's in-house too. You're not bringing anybody outside to do something, we're doing it with the staff that we have.
If I could add on to that, if you don't mind. Yes, all of that is absolutely true, and we are doing this with staff who we get to train in how we want them to do things. So we have control, and we can pick people who we know are going to be effective, and who like kids, and who want to do this job. And we can, if they don't, we can do something about it. Whereas before, we didn't have any control over the staff we were given. And we would have some staff who were highly effective and really good at day treatment. And then we would have some who just weren't, and there was nothing we could really do about that. So this gives us a lot of control over the situation, and it is a much better model and a much better program.
Now, I probably used the wrong words, but I know I didn't. It is, it's not a replacement, but it's a program that's gonna give us what we need.
It's similar, yes.
Yeah, I was concerned, or not, on the statement, I think I got it in front of you, used for students who are disruptive and not responding to in-class redirection. Now, how are we gonna discern that from, from having to go to the principal's office and be suspended versus timeout?
We have a, we have a level system that, that was created, and when you look at the different levels, like a level two type of fence, and it's something that if the teachers have tried this strategy so forth, then they can come to us. This should help reduce some of the suspensions, this should help reduce some of those things that you're seeing across the board. So providing this service, when they're agitated, or when they're, it can, we can work with them there before they have to be suspended, before they have to go to the principal's office. So this is a intermediary-type effort before it gets there.
And that's what I was looking for, because otherwise, old terms would be timeout. And I'm not, I'm not encouraging that, you know, go sit in the corner till you cool off.
No, I'm not, I'm not a big competitor of that.
I'm just gonna be real, I'm not condoning that. I like everything else about this, I understand where we're going. So what are we looking at as outcomes for the, a benchmark of outcomes? What are you looking to see?
So we need to discuss that a little more, but what I would like to see is students' success, we see a decrease by 10% in student suspensions, we see an increase in test scores by five to 10% on our standardized test. That's what I've seen, and that's what I've studied from the information that I've looked at, and I think that's something that's realistic and reasonable. Because if we can provide a support and give them the things that they need, they can be more successful in the classroom setting.
Well, that's kinda what I wanted to hear. I kinda knew that, but I think we just have to know, when we put a new program in, in place, what is the outcome expectation?
Yes.
Two things you just said is what Amherst is striving for, you know, but, but at the bottom of it is to, this transition, I like it with students, and I was just making a note to myself, seemed like the biggest transition I'm seeing now is sixth graders and ninth graders, and maybe even kindergartners.
Definitely.
Am I right about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Or not?
Yeah, our pre- K.
And so if we can, yeah, if we put pre, well, we just keep going, third graders, year olds. But, but that transition, I'm seeing some of these disruptive situations, are you hoping to kinda calm that down a little bit?
Yes, that's definitely what this is for.
But when I know the outcome, or the predicted, I feel better.
Yeah.
Not just another program to bring kids out of the classroom who can't, who can't sit still.
No, it's not a timeout, it's not for a timeout.
I don't want it to be a timeout.
No, ma'am.
But I'm just straightening that out for those that are listening.
Yes.
That we're putting another program in for timeout, when we got enough of those.
Yeah, we, it's definitely not a timeout type thing, because we're gonna teach the zones of regulations, we're working with them on their goals. With a strictly timeout, what are we really working on them? We're saying, go, go sit over here for a little while. No, we're working on things for them to be successful moving forward, and teaching them the skills to be better, so they can be their best.
And I think if I can add to that, it really is a goal to replace exactly what you're talking about. Because the reality has been, in times past, what you mentioned with the principal's office being that timeout spot, the capacity of staff within that particular office to manage the other 5,000 things, but they'll also try to be constructive with what they were doing with that student, that wasn't really reality. This provides that opportunity. And I love Dr. Smith's long-term objectives, I reckon bringing back at the end of the year, see where we head on those. Five percent of those scores. But looking at the, the short-term, meaningful time in class, right? Are we increasing that for the students where we otherwise wouldn't have that, which is gonna lead us to those better test scores, that better performance from a discipline standpoint as well?
Dr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
All right. So are we able on our reports, like our suspension list, to be able to notate when someone has been involved in the program? So that we can draw a correlation between the historical data maybe for the student versus how it's being impacted?
So I'm happy to work with Dr. Hodon on that. We could also talk about providing a report to the board with that same frequency in regards to Best Lab utilization. Dr. Smith has done an incredible job with pulling that data, data set together, so we could also look at it from that direction, if that would be helpful for the board.
I personally would find that very helpful. And what I'm hearing is an opportunity to identify what the student is struggling with, whether it's transitions, whether it's sensory issues, whatever, to help them establish coping tools for themselves and self-management tools, so they don't have to, so they become weaned off of best, because they're being equipped and adapting.
Exactly, and that's the goal. It's not something that's, we want them in there the whole year, we want to be able to provide them the ability to be able to do those things, like you said, provide the coping skills, provide those things that they can be used in the classroom and be successful. So.
Yes, sir.
The, so the four staff members that we have, what, what type of training, degree background do they have? And are we giving them special training to deal with these type of students?
Yes, we're, we're providing training as, then, a lot of them already have a bachelor's degree, but we're providing training and support in the different settings. We're also requiring them to become behavior, going through the RBT coursework, so they can understand behavior, behaviors better. So that's something that, that's part of their job description. So we also do trainings, I meet with them every two weeks. I meet with them, I'm pretty much in every one of the schools at least four or five times a week. But with everything else I've got going on, I make sure I'm, I'm there for my staff. But we also meet with them twice every two weeks, and we go over different things, and we talk about the different areas, and, and we continue these trainings. So it's gonna be a continuous thing, which we will do about an hour every two weeks, and continue to look at things as a whole.
Yeah, and the RBT coursework is really the cornerstone, so there's a lot of others, I believe they're even working with Dr. Patron again this coming Monday. That is something that is also being able to be utilized as a recruitment tool. So to be a registered behavior technician is a very different reality in regards to the workplace, providing mental health supports, behavioral supports. So providing that here in Amherst, allowing that to be a benefit of coming onto a position like this and continuing support through supervision with our BCBA's, it really is a big piece of what we want this program to be. We want, we want to recruit in addition to building up the people that we have right now.
Any concern over doing that, training these people up?
Yep.
Just to have them leave us to go to another division because they want more money?
Absolutely, and that, that is absolutely gonna be a conversation as we're going forward. I believe that budget calendar's gonna come out pretty soon, we'll talk through. But a big piece of that, honestly, is going to be what the environment here looks like for them, the support that they're provided here at Amherst County Public Schools, as opposed to some of those other spots that they may go. But you are absolutely right, that is a conversation that we're gonna have to have ongoing. It's very different to be a behavior technician versus a registered behavior technician. Right now, we've got that pathway to BT, later on, we might be looking at that RBT component of it.
Definitely, and the curriculum that we're using, the RBT, I found a program that is not charging us anything for the county. So they're going through that program for free, and then we'll look at the, go through the checklist afterwards to make sure that they understand the components of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Namers, is it my understanding that Amherst Elementary School was not included into the Best Labs?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. So at this point, and I will absolutely let Dr. Patron chime in as well, there was a database decision-making process with that, so looking at not just referrals in discipline, but also in conversation and kinda quantifying some of that, we have a staff and administrators, the introduction of that new behavioral program at AES, which is separate from the Best Lab, that also factored into the decision-making there. But Dr. Patron, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, so we looked at referral data and mental health data, so based off of threat assessments and based off of previous day treatment needs. And we prioritized the schools in order, and we only had five positions, and Amherst Elementary didn't make it, I mean, the high school didn't make it either when we did that. So we've contracted for services, and, you know, they would be in our thoughts when we get to contracting, if we get the money, and no promises, but we hope.
This is just a, it's a good life skill that we're teaching our students and, and workforce, probably they like to see that, so I'm just hoping that everyone would get that same.
We are too.
That's what our goal is, for it to be at every school. So when they transition from elementary to middle school, that service will be there if it's needed. Because like you talked about, the transition piece from elementary to middle's a big thing, from middle to high school. So we need that component for them to be successful, and component that they can know that they can have for them to help.
And I believe Dr. Wells is gonna cut my mic off here at some point.
I'm sorry.
Ultimately, looking at that, we want to be able to have this track record of implementation for the fall, really look at that data we're able to collect. We want it to be compelling when we bring it to the board, as we're thinking about how we expand this as we're going forward. Absolutely, we want to be in all 10 schools. And some places, we might even need two Best Labs, which is a model that we observed in Fluvana. So we want that data to be compelling when we bring it to the board, absolutely.
Hi, I'm Tyler Parr, I'm the Ag Science Teacher at Amherst Middle School. I'd like to start off by thanking the Amherst County Public Schools Education Foundation for their grant and their dedication to our students each year. What you see here are the lights that we were able to purchase with our grant. These lights are grow lights, so they allow the plants to get artificial lights, or artificial light for their photosynthesis process. We were also able to purchase the flats, as well as all of the seeds that we planted. Right here, we have.
Definitely, and that's part of what they can use for some of the things that they'll need to practice and so forth. And I have some resources I can reach out to different colleges, if that's something we'd like to do.
Board, anything else for Dr. Smith?
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all.
Thanks, sir.
Alrighty, moving on to 7.0 consent agenda. Board, can I get a motion?
Motion of approval.
Okay, I have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Wells? 8.0.
Next, we're at 8.0, administrative, Dr. Hoden.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, been very active over at the high school. This week, the beams were delivered for the span, for the auditorium. They will be, they put those together, and they'll be hanging those next Wednesday, so that is going to be a very exciting day. We have been able to include Mr. Johnston's class to come out and watch that, because that's a life skill that they would have to travel somewhere normally to do that. So we've been able to involve CT in that, but it's gonna be some very exciting times to get those spans on. And when Mr. Oaks goes in just a second, they will, they'll do that. So, Mr. Oaks, I'll turn it over to you right now to do the slideshow.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, should I work smarter, save me a few steps, getting old. So, instead of walking back and forth to Ms. McNary, I'll just stand right here tonight if it's okay with you. So anyway, the project's moving on, as Dr. Hoden was talking about, just to follow up on things that's sort of been closed up a little bit since the last time. The picture on the left is where we board the, right underneath the Lancel sign, and South Main Street, board underneath South Main Street for the water line, and the picture on the right is the pretty green sod. And we went ahead and decided to go with sod because so much water comes down through there, we wanted to get something to grow as quick as we could, and the contractor's still watering that just about every other day, and we actually had a rugged, the grass took real good to it, so it looks much better now than trying to put straw down. Anyway, that's complete, and actually this weekend, tomorrow afternoon after school's out, there's a segment that goes through the pavement part, right there where the welding shop is, and goes on up by the school, the cafeteria, that area back there where the water line runs all up through there, it's just gravel right now. So Friday afternoon at about 3:00, they will come in and scoop out about two or three inches of gravel through that whole area, and then on Saturday morning, the paving companies will come in and pave that whole patch up through there, so that'll be cleaned up as well this weekend. And again, this is going up further than Lancelane, we did some improvements a little bit, had the ditch line, the existing 14-inch pipe that comes out, put some rep out there to help control the water flow and erosion right there as well. We look at the big things that are happening outside of the school, you see the brick walls, you see the trusses that Dr. Hoden was talking about, so a lot of things going on inside as well. The picture on the left is the existing mechanical electrical room that was, you know, serving the existing part of the gyms. This was about a year or so ago, a little bit long, less than a year ago, when they started renovating and putting things out. And this is what the room looks like today, so the, on the right side of the picture, you're looking from the hallway of the new addition into that mechanical room, so you're looking through the door on the left, there were the sunlights coming through, and this is the new IT room. It goes into a door, that door you see in the back of the picture, that actually goes right into the gym areas, just gets you, so acclimate to where we are in the picture. And again, the picture on the left is where they dug out the concrete floor of the existing room, ran new piping to get to the transformers and, and all those things underneath the floor, they poured concrete back in. So where the picture on the right is standing, I'm standing against the wall, against the new hall and the new addition, looking back toward the existing gym, and so that's the way, the sort of orientation we're looking at, and your electrical room, electrical components, transformers and things like that, and they're not finished in it yet. Masonery work continues, most of the guys are pretty happy, you see the picture on the left, I was up on the rooftop one day taking some pictures, and this gentleman was up there, and so we really truly have been blessed with wonderful contractors and subcontractors as well. Picture on the right, it's just some of the masonry work that's occurred in the last three to four weeks, and you're looking, I'm standing actually on top of the existing entranceway, a little bit to the right of that, almost on the kitchen area, looking out, you'll see the steel to the right, it was a new entranceway coming to the school, the high part, of course, is the auditorium itself, and back to further back is the classrooms. This is looking what we call Main Street, so I'm standing basically in front of the new bathrooms, and so the existing school is on the left, the new addition's on, to the right of me, I'm standing in the middle of the hallway, you can see piping going up, copper piping on the left side there, right above the doors, you can look up in the ceiling there, you see the joists and decking in place along with some of the mechanicals such as the HVAC ducts and things like that, and water lines running through there as well. So a lot of small integral things that, again, you don't, you sort of overlook it as you look through the concrete walls and, and still truss going in. This is the hallway going down to the classrooms, to the left of this is like the baseball field outside of the building, and to the right is the interior walls of the classroom. So this first wall you see to the right is actually the theater room, and looking down, and you get to the choir room, and then to the band room on the very end. Again, some of the steel, structural steelwork has gone on. Left picture is looking from Lancelane back across to the construction area, so this, that 45-degree angle, that's where the glass panels will be for the cafeteria part, and the right picture is actually, I'm standing in the, on the stage, and you can see the decking and joists have been placed over the stage, and to the right, if you look at the big opening, that's the stage opening looking out into the auditorium itself. And as Dr. Hoden mentioned, I guess it was Monday, 10th, whatever day, that was, the week has been a long week, but anyway, the steel truss arrived, and this is still truss coming in. These trusses, each section, the full span is about 138, almost 139 foot, when the two sections are put together, it's the span of the auditorium itself. These things are eight, now almost eight and a half foot tall, and each individual section weighs about 9,000 pounds, so combined, we're looking at about 18,000 pounds, but they bolted them together and lifted them up onto the, to the structure, which we'll be carrying next week. This is taking the trusses off the truck, and what we're doing in the back parking lot, if you happen to drive by there, it's full of trusses. There will be 10 of these trusses, combined trusses together, so they're actually 20 individual sections. They take them off the truck, they actually bulk the two sections together, and then next Wednesday morning, the smaller crane leaves, and they're bringing in a larger crane next Wednesday, and approximately next Wednesday, about 10:30 or so, they start setting these trusses into the auditorium itself. In addition to that, we've also, we've been trying to get the students involved as much we possibly can, so Dr. Wells and Dr. Hoden and myself have been talking and working with a welding shop teacher, some of the ag classes have been out there this week looking, seeing what's going on with the trusses, but Wednesday I've got lined up with the steel erector to talk to the classes for a few minutes about how they're putting together, what's going on, those type of things, and also have them out there Wednesday morning, excuse me, when they put the trusses into the auditorium section. Again, the picture on the left was about a month ago, and standing in the seating part of the auditorium, looking up onto the stage, and you can see this last picture was taken last week, both walls were up across, all the stills in place, and coming across there. Again, just taking shape, the picture on the left was a month ago, looking from the main entrance into the auditorium, which is where the students and the main entrance, the back part of the school will be. The picture on the right is this past week, still's up, you can see the right-hand side of the picture is the glass, you have been framing it with masonry walls, and they're walking, working around the left side of the wall right now, coming down, and then also inside the school, where you go into the main hallway, the Main Street, it ties into the existing gym hallway, they're framing that, when they frame it up, they put the masonry concrete blocks in place for that, so framing those doors inside too, so a lot of things inside that we don't see. Again, rooftop views, just overall picture, the construction project has progressed in the last month or so. This is actually looking from the rooftop down, the right, right picture rather, is looking from the rooftop down onto the, in the bottom part of the picture is the new restroom, the next part, there's a little narrow area, that's a storage closet, and then the top part of the picture there, where you see the gentleman with the orange vest on, and their, in their land masonry block, that's gonna be concession stand area, so that's right before you go into the existing part of the school. And the picture on the left is actually at ground level looking into the new restrooms in the new facility. Also, back in the classroom sections, the picture on the left is about a month ago, the one on the right is just last week, so you can see the interior walls of all the classrooms are always from the floor to ceiling now, the HVAC equipment's going into placing, the piping and those type of things are going into place as well. And going back in time a year ago, roughly a year ago, and we've been, we've seen these pictures before, so I'm running out of rooftop, because, excuse me, that's now 6:00 right there, and so the building's getting taller than existing, close to it, so I'm gonna start having to use Dr. McGinnis for his drone to get on top, see what's going on, he just doesn't know that yet. But anyway, any questions? The big things coming up, continue masonry work, and actually, in the masonry work, there'll be sort of transitioning in the next few weeks out of, you know, the cinder block and those type of things, and actually putting vapor barrier on, and starting actually the brick, for the finishing brick on the backside of the building, and work there, working there way around, so we will see probably in the next three to four weeks, maybe somewhere like that, it actually starting going from a cinder block to the red color brick and the finishing brick on that, so we hope that'll be happening soon. Continue steel erection, your truss installation, as well as continuing to your work on electrical water, you know, all your HVAC stuff. Any questions?
Board, yes.
Which day are you doing the spans?
Wednesday, everything goes right, it should be Wednesday about, about 10:30, M1 to 10 to 10:30.
Okay, I drive by there often, okay. 10:30, I'll be looking for it.
What's the new capacity of the, or gonna be the capacity of the theater?
1,400 seats, compared to 400 or so now?
On a good day.
On a good day, so it's, it's gonna be quite amazing. As we walk, we had a construction meeting yesterday, we walked around with the architect and the, and the construction company as well, and just, when you see the auditorium, it's funny how it's transitioned, but it's, it's massive, it's just impressive. And as we continue to grow, as you start adding things in there, just, it's, it's gonna be a, a great addition to, not only to the school system, but to the county as a whole. So it's a good decision.
It's gonna be a great new place for convocation.
Yes, it will, yes, it'll be great. So anyway, that's what's been going on in the construction project at the high school, but I'm also happy, I turned around a while ago and showed Mr. Porter, this past week we also poured the floor and the drain, stuff like that, for the greenhouse at Amherst Middle School, so that is progressing as well now. Baby steps.
Great.
Any questions?
Board, any, any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, sir.
Also on that, the cafeteria will seat approximately 400, and the other number to know, Mr. Childers, it's about 43,000 square feet, is the new addition. Continuing on the fieldhouse, we are still waiting for DEQ, we have the building permit, everything else, we're hoping to get that within the next few days. The building will arrive on site around the first week of November, so all that work should be done before the building arrives, and then that should go up relatively quickly because it's a metal, metal building, so that's for the fieldhouse. Second thing on my agenda was safety drills, just letting you know, we've completed all the safety drills, the, as the code requires us to do lockdowns within the first 10 days, and another set within the first 20. We are now there, all of our schools have completed that, as well as fire drills, and then we'll move on, next month we'll actually do the earthquake drill, so drills are, drills are going well according to code. Questions on that?
Board, anything for Dr. Hoden?
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. 8.02, you have the proposed revisions to the policy manual?
And I'll just add that the revisions were, from when the state pushed these back, from BSB pushed these back out, there were some grammatical errors originally, you already approved these once, but there were some grammatical, one was they had, they set a school board, they had school year, and so they found a couple of those minor things. So this is first read, however, if you so choose, you could approve tonight, but if you want to wait till next month, that's fine as well.
Okay. Any preference from the board, whether we approve them tonight or next time?
So, so both of these packages were all approved before, but now they've got grammatical change?
Yes. Okay. Anything from the board? All right.
Oh, you wanna know, are we approving them or?
Well, we, I mean, it's up to the board, we can either make a motion to approve them tonight, or we can wait till next month.
I personally would like to wait for next month if that's possible. Does that cause any problem?
Doesn't cause any problem.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. All right. Dr. Hoden?
Okay, 8.03, you have the August suspension report. And that is all for me, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on, 9.0.
Go ahead, Mr. Conidge and Finance.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we are discussing the July and August financial transactions in the new school year. So first, for your revenue, everything's being received as anticipated, if you look like, look at the reports, it's gonna look like that revenue is pretty low, but just remember your child nutrition program is reimbursable, so you're not gonna really be seeing a lot of revenue in the month of August. And for the school side, you're going to only be receiving your SOQ-funded revenue, and that'll be through July through December, and you'll have, you won't see any sales tax on this report, because the July and August is actually recognized in the prior year, so we'll start seeing the sales tax show up in the September reporting. On the expenditures, the only things I really wanted to point out was that you will not see the payroll and benefits encumbered until after the October payroll has been processed. And on the object code report, there's two items, on page three, you'll see the textbook fund, that line is showing almost 400,000 over budget, please don't panic, there is funding in the textbook reserve, this is your textbook adoption, the items did not get received until July, so this is a current year expenditure, and we were using some of the all-in Virginia money that was received last year, as well as some of the textbook funds, so those will be a supplemental appropriation as we pull it from the textbook reserve at the county. The second thing on that report is on page four, just for transparency, the CARES funds, when we were doing the budget, Dr. Wells had mentioned that, you know, these were just projections of what CARES funds we were gonna have to roll over into the year, and at the time, we, we were expecting about a million dollars in the SR3 for construction, another 800,000 for the CARES for HVAC, and the, the construction project at the high school did go a little bit faster than I thought, so on that line for the CARES funds, where it's 1,857,891, just know that 1 million of that did not carry over, it was actually spent in the prior year, you actually had a supplemental appropriation last year, so when you see that, I just wanted to be very transparent, that you will never see that, that revenue show up.
It was spent.
It was spent last year, yeah. So do you have any questions on the finance report?
Board, any questions for Mr. Conidge?
No, but I would just like to say thank you. I know the work that you do is not easy, and I appreciate all that you do to, to get that to us, so thank you.
Okay. Anything else, board?
Oh, Ms. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Not to do with money, so to speak, the enrollment, I'm looking at that.
Yes, so the budget, it was built on 37, 37, 12.90. This enrollment report, the ADM is showing at 36,92, which is a deficit of 20 students, so we have, that has been a discussion, and we will keep monitoring it, and knowing that we will have to adjust if that number does not come closer to what we have.
That's why I took a little notice to it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks for that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
This is LeConic, do you know what the enrollment was about a year ago?
I can get, I can get that for you.
Okay, I was just wondering what the trend was looking like, and then also I was noticing on the object code, supplements and bonus, can you tell me what the differences between those?
The difference between the supplement and the bonuses?
Both, yes.
So bonuses are just what that states, it's your safety bonuses, sometimes in some of the grants we've had, there was bonuses to certain staff members that went, you know, through that grant, there is a contract that has a stipulation for a bonus, so those are just what that is, that is bonus. The, the supplements are, you might have those stipends, like coaching stipends, anything that's supplemental pay.
Okay, and I'm noticing that we have allocated 728,301 for the supplements, is that what we're anticipating for the year?
Yes, I mean, that's what we have in the budget. The one thing with the school division is a lot of these supplements are based off of a person, it's a percentage of the person's salary, so it does make it difficult when the person that's getting that supplement, you know, it changes, so that's, once we get the coaching stipends and all those supplemental stipends in there in October, that's when we will encumber for the full year and see if there's any funding that's left over.
Okay, so I'm assuming we increased this over last year's, given the fact that we've given salary increases?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, have we ever given just straight supplement amounts, as opposed to being a percentage of income?
There are some that are a flat rate, and then there are some that are a percentage. There have been discussions of looking into it, because it does make, it does present a challenge for budgeting, but it also is a challenge whenever you change, and there's people that have been, you know, receiving that based off of, of their pay.
Right, okay.
It is something that we can definitely discuss, I'm sorry, that we can discuss during the budget process.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, and also they, I didn't have to look it up, Dr. Patron has provided that to me, thank you, it is 38,61. That was enrollment this time of that last year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Board, anything else for Mr. Conidge?
I actually have a second item.
Okay.
Except there's no more questions. The next item is the FY '26 proposed budget calendar. It is very similar to last year's, however, there is an October work session that's been added, so what you'll see in October is there'll be an opportunity to get the budget priorities from the school board members, so we get to hear from you all, and then in November, and Mr. Neighbors, this could be November 15th, your individual schools and departments priority, he gave us a little sneak peek of that this evening, that's when we'll hear from the schools and the different departments what their needs are in the budget for next year, things that they would like to have, you know, considered, and then on December 12th, we have the public hearing to get the budget, public's feedback on the budget, things that they would like to see included, and so then we'll get the information from the governor and general assembly as far as whatever revenue's gonna look like, this, we would then have the special school board meeting where the superintendent would present the budget in February, on February 27th. We would have the school board budget retreat on March 6th, and then again, give the public hearing to give the public an opportunity to give feedback based off of what they have heard on March 13th. We would have that second work session if needed on the 14th, and the day, the day for presenting to the board of supervisors is March 18th. So we wanted to provide this to you all tonight to get your feedback.
Board, any questions on the proposed schedule there?
Just go with it.
It looks very similar, so. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Conidge. Alrighty, are we at 10?
We're at 10.
10.0.
So now we have Dr. Norman with instruction.
Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Brittany. Tonight, I want to bring to your attention at your Thank you, Brittany. Tonight, I want to bring to your attention, at your place, you have this wonderful book, Academic Data Binder, that the instructional staff, led by Jill Gwell and Ruth Matheny and Ms. Gwen Ellis, put together. All of the information in regards to our 2023, 2024 spring data is in here. It is, some of it is still preliminary from the state, and so that information is in there. We'll go through just a brief overview of it today to give you that information verbally. You have the binder, you can go through that. If you have any questions regarding the data for the school year of last year, or any questions that you have from the presentation tonight, if you will give those questions, email them to the board chair, and then the board chair will then submit them to Dr. Wells, so that we can answer them appropriately, whatever questions that you have. Okay? I'm going to go ahead and start us on the presentation. The first thing I'd like to just commend you for is the spending amounts that we've been able to adhere to and improve on from year to year. So right now, we have 24% of our financial support is locally funded, which is a little bit higher than what the state normally does, by our locality giving us 24% of our total budget. Also, our per pupil spending is right around $12,000, a little bit more than $12,000. And in comparison to the state, the state is only about $2,000 more. And us being a rural county, that is extremely, extremely well in what we provide our students in that per pupil spending. We do want to point out that our economically disadvantaged, which is our free and reduced lunch population, continues to grow. We're at 22% across the division now, which is also allowing us to receive CEP, which is our child nutrition. Every child gets freely breakfast and lunch across our schools. The next information I'd like to provide for you is just to remind you, there are two different accountability systems. There is one completely for the state, and we'll go through what the state requires. And then there is a totally different accountability system for the federal government, and we have to meet all of those requirements. So I'll take you through the state first, and then we'll talk about the federal requirements as well. In regards to the state, it is the same accreditation indicators that we have had for the last six years, and it is English, math, and science. And then also, looking at our achievement gaps, we have eight different subgroups that we have to meet benchmarks for. We also have student engagement indicators. Those are four, and that is our graduation, our dropout rate, our chronic absenteeism, and our college career and civic readiness, which is specific to mainly most of those, other than chronic absenteeism, is specific to the high school. The last part of the levels of accreditation, there are three different levels. And as Mr. Neighbors goes through the actual school data, he's going to talk about the different levels. There is one level that, at level one, where you are at or above standard, level two, that they are near standard, or they have shown improvement getting towards the standard, or that level three, which is below standard, which puts us in a very different regulations from the state. So we can be accredited, fully accredited, we can be accredited with conditions, and we can be denied accreditation. The only way that you are denied accreditation is if you are placed under sanctions, or if you're placed under a corrective action plan, or a plan for improvement, and you do not follow that plan, or you do not meet the benchmarks that the state has put forward. At no time have we ever, has Amherst ever not met those benchmarks from the state. So before we go forward, just to let you know, across the board, and I believe I gave this in the last school board meeting, all of our schools are accredited. We have seven of our schools fully accredited, and two of our schools accredited with conditions, meaning that those schools are specific to having improvement, conditions from the state, and we will learn more about that in the next 30 to 45 days. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wells right now, who can talk to you about what we're already, what he's already planning for us to do this year.
So in the area of science, we've noticed some deficits in our middle school science, and our scores aren't really where we think we, they need to be. So we are contracting with a independent group to come in. It's called Nurture by Nature, and they're going to come in and do an assessment of our middle school science programs. And hopefully, with that information, we'll be able, that audit will give us more, more details than, from a neutral point of view, so to speak, versus from our internal. So we want to look at that, look at our gaps in the curriculum, as well as the foundational skills that were misaligned within our pacing and so forth. So we're going to do that starting this fall. Actually, email's going out tomorrow, and they'll start doing some work with our teachers on Monday to kind of do that assessment, and then work with our staff throughout the fall to see where we are. But we wanted to make sure that we're doing some things, get an independent look at this from our middle school science, because we are noticing some concerns there. You'll see that when we go through our data. Additionally, it's important to note that because we're restructuring our middle school science, the scores we have this year in middle school science, as far as SOL scores, will be our scores next year, because since we're restructuring and putting, separating the sciences back out into three years, and putting the earth science back at the high school, we will not have an SOL test at the middle school this year. So the scores stay with us additional year. So just so you understand that as we go through it.
So if I can give you a little bit of information, for the past 12 years, we have compacted our science curriculum in the middle schools, meaning that they had a sixth-grade science, seventh-grade life science, and an eighth-grade physical science. That three different types of science were compacted about 12 years ago, and they put sixth, they did not teach sixth-grade science. It was embedded into seventh-grade life science, and eighth grade moved down. And then we put eighth grade as an earth science for that verified credit. Now that the state is requiring, and the federal government is requiring for earth science to be one of the sciences, whatever science you take at the high school, which is required now Biology I to be your federally required course to get a science credit and a verified credit in, that's the first science that you have to take at the high school. So we'll be, and a lot of our kids passed earth science at the middle school, getting that verified credit came to the high school. They were required to take the Biology I test, but did not have to pass it. That impacted our scores greatly, because kids would, who passed and got their verified credit, would click, 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 click through it. And then that lowered our scores. So we went and did, we spread out the science at middle school again. The first test that they take will be the required Biology I test for their verified credit, and then they will be allowed to take earth science to get their four domains. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Neighbors to kind of go through school data.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. A couple of quick notes before we dive into the school data, as you all are looking at the charts that are up there. Level one, performances, Dr. Norman was talking about earlier, will be noted in green, level two in yellow, level three in red. Those little asterisks you see next to some of the numbers represent that the cumulative three-year average was utilized by the state instead of the current year data, as looking for accreditation purposes. The TS, too small, so for some of our subgroups at some of our schools, that population is too small to be calculated in. We still look at those numbers. We want to know what those numbers are, but for the accreditation purposes, they aren't calculated, along with the rest. You also see R10 in parentheses, representing that reduction in failure rate by at least 10% or more compared to the previous year. So as we're looking here in Amalon Science Whole School, again, as Dr. Wells was just noting there, science continues to be a focus area for us across the division. While we want to see that percentage come up, we're very excited to see that R10, and knowing that we have more students that are getting that test passed as they are going through that first time. But knowing, again, as Dr. Wells noted, that is going to continue to be an area of focus for us there at Amalon Elementary. A couple of areas there in English related to our subgroups, multiple races and students with disabilities, we saw those percentages come down slightly, but in both categories, we saw the number of students that passed the test increase. So positive movement towards actually passing the assessment in both of those subgroup areas. The same was true for students with disabilities in math. Again, we still didn't see the percentage come up. In addition to that, that raw pass rate of students that passed the assessment increased as well. So still certainly work to be done with those subgroups in addition to science, but like to see that positive trend in regards to students actually passing the assessment. With Amherst Elementary, love to see all that green. Again, saw some good progress as well in individual subgroups. You'll note the R10 for students with disabilities in math. The same was true, not R10, but we did see an increase in students passing for students with disabilities in English as well. So a lot of great numbers there to begin with, but the numbers behind the numbers are also very encouraging in regards to where students are and how they're performing on that assessment. All right, for Central Elementary School, so you'll note a different color, a rainbow here when it comes to Central. Central is a priority school for us this year, providing a significant amount of support. I believe Dr. Norman and I have spoken to Mr. Prophet multiple times a day, every day, since the beginning of the summer, but ultimately knowing that there's a tremendous amount of work that has been done. There's a tremendous amount of work that still is yet to be done. We want to be able to support them with that. Again, it's going to be a trend this evening. Science continues to be a focus area as we are moving forward. We did see in our subgroups in regards to English, from thinking about black, economically disadvantaged, those percentages come down. We don't have that corresponding bump in students passing the assessments, so that's going to be definitely an area of focus for us as we're looking at how we support Central moving forward. For our students classified as multiple races or students with disabilities, we saw R10 there for multiple races, even with students with disabilities. We also saw that raw pass rate increase. More students are passing the test at the outset, so some positive momentum there. We want to continue to capture and move forward with. Same is true of math, so our subgroups there with black, level two, did not see that increase, and passed the test saw a decrease in percentage. So another area that we're going to make sure we're focusing on through that PLC process and other support mechanisms. For our other two there, thinking about multiple races and students with disabilities, some positive trends, especially that R10, students with disabilities, we want to continue to capture that momentum. We have students that are passing that test, which we want them to do initially. How are we increasing that number year over year, providing that direct support? Dr. Patron, I'm sure we'll have some things to chime in on related to chronic absenteeism, but some of our schools are seeing some very, very positive numbers with that. Others, we know we still have work yet to do, but it's great to see in this data for a lot of our schools, the effects of what Dr. Patron and her team have been putting in with chronic absenteeism. Want to continue that good work there at Central.
Have we looked into why, I said it's double of what Amalon was, right? Because Amalon was 13%, they're 26.
Yep.
Do we have any idea why the school is double?
I'll turn to Dr. Patron on that one.
There are numerous factors that play into that, from structural problems that we had last year, just with staff members being out sick and not being able to do the things that needed to be done related to attendance. But also, they have a really high rate of economically disadvantaged families. And when we look at our subgroup data at Central and across the division, it's economically disadvantaged families that are having the most trouble with chronic absenteeism. So we're switching gears from everybody come to school. We still want everybody to come to school, believe me, but we're starting to focus specifically on families who are struggling, and put in interventions that actually work for them, and what's, the barriers are for them, as opposed to just saying, hey, get your kid to school, even though you're trying to survive.
And I will add there with Central, last year, we had maybe higher than typical concentration of long-term subs, so the folks in the building that weren't fully licensed. It's amazing already this year, the consultations we've had, initially, the different field within some of those departments, having those qualified longstanding staff members that are going to be in those spots right now. So already seeing some positives, as Dr. Patron mentioned, the staffing component there.
So are we, are we suggesting that staffing caused some of the chronic absenteeism?
Well, in regards to instructional delivery, a licensed teacher teaching science, English, history, that makes an impact. Also, someone who knows that they're going to be there long-term actually builds those relationships with the kids more prominent, getting in and talking with the parents a little bit more often. And so with a licensed, fully-staffed school, that trend, you see that we have better scores than when we do with a long-term sub in any kind of position. Yes, sir?
All right, moving on to Elan Elementary. Again, love seeing all that green. As we're looking at that raw data across the board, the raw pass rate was up. So some wonderful things happening there. The data behind the data is also very, very exciting and promising there at Elan. Madison Heights Elementary, I know we've got that red block over the science. I do think it's important to note for the board that just two years ago, we were a little under 16% with our pass rate. So clear to see that a lot of work is being done at Madison Heights. They know, and we know, we still have ground yet to gain with that, but exciting to see the positive trend for them specifically within that subject area. The same is true, looking at our students with disabilities in English. Again, that pass rate, the number is down just a bit. The R10 last year, they also saw an increase again this year in the number of students passing that test from the outset. So some positive trends, some good momentum to be able to build on there at Madison Heights. Temperance Elementary School, we may come to just kind of expect it to be all green, but giving credit where credit is due, a lot of hard work went into raising all of these numbers that you see on this chart for this year. So tremendous amount of work being done there at Temperance. All those TSs have students behind them, great numbers that we're looking at there as well, and making sure we're tracking. With a school temperance size, one student can make the difference oftentimes. Looking at those subgroups, looking at overall pass rate. So we want to make sure we continue tracking with them, but wonderful data from them. All right, Amherst Middle School, again, as Dr. Wells was referencing earlier, looking at science performance, that is an area of focus, bringing in a group helping there, but knowing there's continued to be that focus area at Amherst Middle as we're moving forward. Want to continue to see that number trend in a positive direction. Also, looking at their subgroups, so specifically looking at in English, our black students and students with disabilities, we love to see that R10 for students with disabilities, seeing that number of pass rates go up. That was not the case with our black students. Again, looking at that as a point of emphasis as we're in, PLCs, we're working with staff, really getting from them how we can best support trending those numbers in the positive direction. The same with our students with disabilities related to math. We saw a reduction percentage of pass, but also that raw pass rate also went down. That's an area of particular emphasis for us in the Student Services Department, making sure we're supporting that department in their efforts to get those scores trending in a good direction. All right, Manellison Middle. Again, as has been the theme tonight, looking at that science performance. Again, there's a reason why, Dr. Wells spoke to that. We know that's an area of emphasis and focus for us as we're going forward this year, seeing that level three performance in science. Looking at our subgroups there in math, and even, I guess I should start with English, seeing that R10 with students with disabilities, as well as our black students, is positive. We want to continue to see that growth. The same can be said for our gap groups there in mathematics, our black students, our economically disadvantaged students, both getting that R10. Students with disabilities doesn't have the R10 next to it, but we also did again, see that gain in raw pass rate for them. So a lot of good momentum to build off of there. All right, I believe Mr. Crawford is still in the back of the room. He, I need him to say, he loves that green up there on the screen, loves his green. But ultimately, tremendous amount of work from the staff at Amherst County High School, leadership of Mr. Crawford, to get these wonderful numbers that we see here, R10-ing. And science, again, looking at the percentage, we want to continue to work through that, move to a better place, as Dr. Wells was talking about earlier. I also love to see that R10 in chronic absenteeism, but a tremendous amount of work looking at those academic indicators, especially when we're looking at subgroup performance. Those numbers are spectacular compared to a lot of what we would expect to see, especially at the high school level. All right, so can, oh, please, yes, ma'am.
So in your binder, just to make sure that you're kind of tracking, if you'll go to Amherst County, if you'll go to, pick a school, any school, I've picked the Manellison. The slide that he showed you was the first page in underneath that, but then, the next four or five pages are the actual detailed Virginia, that's the report that we get from the Virginia Department of Education, which actually shows our participation rate, how many students were tested, and it gives something very, that you can look towards, where it shows current year, what happened the current year, what happened last year, the previous year, or the year before, and then a cumulative three-year average. And when he's talking about that little star or asterisk, that cumulative three- And when he's talking about that little star or asterisk, that cumulative three-year average, they take, if that's higher, they take that. If it's not, they'll take current or previous year. So it kind of gives you the historical data for each of those schools, rather than just the one shot of the slide that breaks it down by subgroups.
Thank you, Dr. Norman. All right, so looking at some historical trends here with our division data, we wanted to provide a better frame of reference in regards to pre-pandemic performance versus where we've come over the last several years. So you will notice a positive trend across those subject areas, looking at moving back towards those pre-pandemic levels, not there yet, and certainly not satisfied. We know there's work to be done to continue to get us where we need to be, but it's good to see that there is that positive trend as we're looking at where we were pre-pandemic versus where we are today. We also wanted to provide, as we have in years past, a comparison with some of our surrounding divisions. Again, as we are looking at this data, knowing where we're falling compared to some of our local friends here in the area, we want to be higher, right? As we're thinking about how we're comparing, where we look in regards to other divisions, knowing there's work to be done there. We are actively reaching out, talking to colleagues, I know I have quite often, in regards to students with disabilities specifically, but other areas as well, looking to see what we can glean from other divisions, determining how that might fit our models here in Amherst, what we want to be able to do for our students. But as we've done this historically, we want to continue to do that for the board, knowing where we measure up in regards to some of our other divisions in the immediate area. All right, Dr. Norman.
Thank you. So the next couple of slides are all preliminary data. That data doesn't get officially completed until our master data collection goes through, and it'll be signed off probably mid, end of September, first part of October. The first one is our on-time graduation rate, and this is for Virginia, and Virginia requires that goal of 100% of students graduating on time. Right now, we have a 94.3% percentage of our students graduating on time. That's down about 1.6% from the previous year, but over the last five years, it's actually up 5%. So we've, we're moving in the right direction. We have a smaller class size, and so that just tweaks between one or two points each year. The next one is our federal graduation indicator. This is one of the things that we have in our accountability piece for the federal government. We are required to have an 80% FGI. Right now, we have a 92.98, which is phenomenal. We've increased, and that's been very good, showing that growth over the last several years. The next one is our graduation completion index, and this is really what we actually are shown for accreditation with the, with that on-time, I mean, the GCI, it takes in a whole allotment. It's our GED students, it is our students that go past that graduation cohort, students with disabilities who go that extra year that they, they may need that. And it is, we are, the requirement is 85%, and currently, right now, we're at 95.85 for last year, which is better than what we did in 2019, pre-pandemic, which was 90%. The dropout rate, I'm very excited about this because we've actually improved this current school year. Good job, Joey Crawford. We are at a 2.35, and if I could kind of tell you, in 2019, Amherst County High School, what is at a 7.24 dropout rate. So the amount of work, hard work by our teachers, the building of relationships, the getting kids what they need, having them feel successful in that environment has been tremendous, and it is shown for our students in their graduation. And the last thing I'd like to show, and Dr. Patron, feel free to chime in, actually, this is Dr., this is Mr. Neighbors.
I like the idea of Dr. Patron chiming in as well, actually. That's good. But again, with some pockets there, and I'll certainly let Dr. Patron speak to that, seeing those bars trending in the positive direction there. A lot of work has gone into, to making that the case. So kudos to Dr. Patron and her team, but is there anything you'd like to add?
I think you're doing great.
Okay. So again, work to be done, as we talked about before, but great to see those positive trends in a lot of our schools. We did also want to show you visual here, so this is from our brand-new shiny system from the state, Laser, which stands for, I had to write it down, Learning Analytics to Support Education and Reporting. We've got some great visuals here in regards to chronic absenteeism. Again, those lines are all over the place, and we want to continue to see that trend down towards the bottom of the graph as we are at the majority of our schools. We see some plantehem there, but this is giving us another great tool to be able to track that data and look at where we have come, and hopefully where we are going to be headed here in the near future.
Thank you. The next piece is really the federal accountability, and what they do is they take the data from our state accreditation information, they dump it over into meeting what the benchmarks are, where those are federal guidelines, and cut scores that we have to meet for, for the federal government, and they watch you for a certain number of years. If you get anything in regards to a Level 2 or more, you can go from year one on a Level 2 to year two, year four, year five. The same thing with Level 3s. So if you stay at a Level 1, you're good, you're off the watch list, you don't have to worry about anything. Right now, we have six of our schools on the federal watch list for a variety of Level 2s or Level 3s in years, all the way from 1 to 5. We have one school in year 4, Amherst County High School, and it's at a Level 3 and has been at a Level 3 for chronic absenteeism, except for this past year, which it moved to a Level 2, but it still kept them at a Year 4 in regards to, because they did not move to a Level 1. Year, we have one school in a Year 5, Central Elementary School, in regards to math, students with disabilities, who have been at either a Level 2 or a Level 3 for the past five years. What happens in regards to that are, Dr. Wells will get information from the state probably in October, discussing what requirements from the state have been given from the federal government, and that could be a host of things that we would have to do. The hardest would be sanctions that they place us under, or loss of revenue, which blows my mind. You would think that they'd want to give us more to help our struggling schools, but that usually does not come out until October. And once that does, we will provide you that information as well. But we're working with each one of these schools, already met with each one of the administrators, putting plans into place to kind of move them forward and kind of get them out. I will say that the high school, as well as Central Elementary, they have moved closer to the mark each and every year. It's just they are staying in that band where it considers them at a Level 3, so they move back in each year, but getting much, much better each year. So what do we do now that we've looked at our data? And when I say we've looked at a data, this really for you is just a big 20,000-foot. We have met with our administrators, met with our school teams, met with the division-level team, gone student by student, tracked what has happened, looked at each of our subgroups. It has been very, very diligent and a lot of hard work. And the first thing I'd like to do is thank our school administrators, as well as our teachers, who know their kids and know that the data that they've started with at the beginning of the year, and have already done assessments this year to get the, to get foundational information to move forward. So what does that mean that we as a division are going to do to support them? Well, we're required to do a couple of things. The first thing that we're required to do is meet VDOE guidelines, and that is, we have to do periodic reviews with each of our schools, and we have to do periodic reviews of our lesson plans. So every teacher's required, Dr. Wells set this up several years ago, it doesn't matter if they want to do lesson plans or not, they're required to do lesson plans. And there are components that are just best for kids in the classroom to actually go through, and those components are all established for every teacher in our division to have that, whether they teach a health and physical education class, a CTE class, an art class, a content-specific class for like English, math, or reading, they have to have those components because that's what's good for kids. We also have to have ongoing discussions with our teachers, as well as our administrators, as well as here at the division level. We have to have regular meetings with administrators and provide them professional development on how to support teachers in their building. And then we also have to have some on, ongoing job-embedded professional development on high-quality instructional material. We are required to do that at our elementary K through 5 this year. Next year, it is actually HQIM is all the way through 8th grade, but it's for all core content, not just our literacy, which is our Virginia Literacy Act. The next part is, what are we going to do to focus on quality instruction? And we're ensuring that we use the instructional time that we've been given, and we allocate that not just for remediation, but to intervene where kids have lost skills or weren't even given the opportunity to learn that skill, to get foundational skills. We also are going to be handling that alignment of what is taught in the classroom, is what we test in the classroom, and it is what the state will test on. So that entire alignment of written, taught, and tested. We also have a database. We're using data to make the decisions, and we're using our professional learning communities, our PLCs, in the schools every single week where teachers get together, they talk about individual students, they talk about subgroups, they talk about the data, and not just talk about the data, see what's working with that child, what's not working, and what's the intervention or the remediation that needs to happen specifically with individual kids. And that is a huge undertaking, and I applaud our teachers for going the extra mile to make that happen this year. We also have Domain 1, which is our academic tracking tool. Ruth Matheny has been phenomenal in creating our way to track data, an easy way for, for teachers to put that information in, for it to calculate, spit it back out, and let us know exactly where we need to provide supports to our kids. The last thing, or one of the things, is all of the items that we're required to do now under the new plan, the new system of our Virginia support framework, which is different from the old school improvement process. So if you have overwhelmed people, or you hear overwhelmed people, we probably are, moving from the old system that everybody knew, that everybody was moving in the right direction on, that we were getting really good at, and then the state transferring us over within a three-month period, a four-month period, to a brand-new system has been very, very time-consuming, as well as difficult to get everybody moving in the right direction. Not, our administrators in our schools have done an outstanding job trying to learn the new system in a very short period of time, and turn it around, and actually walk away with the product that they're supposed to have the end of October. And so implementing that has been a, something that we're consistently doing. We have to have it implemented by the end of the school year to meet the federal and the Virginia guidelines. And so we've been, we've come to the board and presented that in a couple of different occasions, but this is something that is actually required this year for us to implement. Then the last item that I have is, these are all the things, talk about overwhelming, but these are all the things, division-wide instructional focus of where we're putting our efforts towards. Now, the staff does so many things and have so many things on their plate, but we have to be very specific on what it is that we're doing. We have to be intentional. So some of the things that we are being intentional on is, we have combined our ATSS system, our Amherst-tiered Systems of Support, because that's already a system, a framework with that, that we use in our, in our school system, and we are using, we're taking the Virginia Support Framework, and instead of have two systems running, competing against time and efforts and everything, we've combined those two. Dr. Patron and Ms. Cecil, Ms. Wheeler, Mr. Neighbors have pulled those together so that we can give one thing to our administrators, so they can move in the right direction using one system. That's been huge. We're doing our instructional rounds again. We're utilizing our adopted literacy core curriculum and making sure that we're going in for those literacy walks, and we're seeing what's going on and how they're using that. And then we're implementing consistent, a consistent, across-the-board elementary master schedule. When I mean, all the 4th grade goes to this resource at the same time, so that those 4th grade teachers have either planning, or they have PLCs to where as a division, we can open up a Google Meet, and every 4th grade teacher in the division can get on this Google Meet, and we can talk about literacy, we can talk about math, we can talk about science, they can ask us questions, we can respond to those, we can have some really real-time discussions with our teachers. We open that up every Friday for our teachers to pop in and out when they're available to ask us whatever questions that they want to, because I have a very small staff and we can't be everywhere. So this is one of the ways that we're able to get feedback and instant communication with our teachers when we're unable to be right there in the classroom with them. And then in regards to our literacy, our math, and our science, we're just really pushing in and doing some very specific things, reaching out to parents specifically, because if we don't have the parents understanding the new standards and what we're doing and how we're moving, and what we want to do with them in intervention time, or the support plan that we're putting in place for them, or their reading plan, that's, that's detrimental to the child. So we really need our parents to be able to understand what's going on with their child in the school system, and then...
Yeah, I did want to add, because we do want to keep an eye on the future, thinking about our early childhood programs, the students participating there, we want to be able to build that strong foundation. And the reality that we've seen, and Ms. Ligon, you referred to this earlier, when we have needs behaviorally, specifically in kindergarten, that draws resources away from our testing grades, where we're also going to need that support, right? So knowing that that strong foundation is going to be key, and continue to devote resources in that area to support those staff, working with those students. It's a special education there, but I really think, looking at all subgroups, we want to make sure, as Dr. Norman has been referring to, we're taking that individualized and intentional approach. It really is student by student, family by family, where we're going to see progress within those subgroups of schools where we've seen that. That's the approach they've taken. Our other schools obviously are doing the same, continuing to make sure that we are looking at all of those students individually by name and understanding what their needs are and how we move them forward. It's a huge focus for us, has been, but continues to be as we're moving forward with our subgroup supports.
And this isn't all, this is just what we could fit on the slide. Okay. So what I want to make sure you understand is, our goal is always to be fully accredited across the board with every single school in every single subgroup. But what we really want to make sure that we do, moving out of the pandemic, moving closer and closer to where we were pre-pandemic, is close that achievement gap. We want to close the achievement gap with our black students, our students with disabilities. Our economically disadvantaged group is growing every year, and we have to make sure we're keeping that as, just as important in closing the achievement gap for every, every child, and go through the continuous improvement process that the state has put in place, that we know is just something that we need to do, but really focusing on kids, because we, we wouldn't be here if it weren't for the kids. And we always have to take it back to what's best for kids and what can we do for them. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Wells, and then take any questions.
Right, I just want to thank Dr. Norman and her team for all the work they've done preparing the data tonight, but also in getting our students prepared. I think one thing that's important to note, that regardless of subgroup, that economically disadvantaged over, is part of all those, and the schools that have the highest economically disadvantaged percentages are schools that are, have the attendance rates or... or the worst attendance rates and also our scores a little bit off in those schools. So, you know, we can talk about all the other subgroups, but, and all those individuals are part of, it makes no difference what color you are or what nationality you are. But the economic disadvantage seems to be the overriding thing we're seeing right now, looking at our data. That's an area we have to focus on because those are the schools and our students that are typically struggling the most. So we need to make sure we're hitting on those. But moving forward, our goal this year again is to continue to improve. We, yes, we are glad that we are accredited, but we also know that we have work to be done. And we've started that work early this year. And if you go with some of the, if you go into these meetings that Dr. Norman's team has been having within our schools, I think y'all have been in six.
You're more than welcome to come, yes.
Six schools so far?
Yes.
And you have a couple more to go and then you get the first round knocked out. But they're in there, you were at Amalon.
We were at Amalon yesterday and today.
And Meneilson before that.
Meneilson before that, Central.
So they've been hitting the schools and really working with those teachers and working with the PLCs and stuff there. So again, I thank them for the work they're doing and really the focus we're having on the individual student and identifying the needs of those students. So if you've got any questions you have, we'll be glad to ask, answer them. However, you may need time to digest what you just heard and come back with it to us next month with more specific questions. Yes, ma'am.
Not a question, but just, well, yeah. I wasn't doing it in my statements, but I'll just stay right here while we're here. Thank you for all the work. I always want to throw that out there first, but then let me just throw my part in. I'm still a little dismayed. We've had this science conversation in the past and I'm not sure why we're still there. And I'm not that old that I don't remember having the very same science conversation. We began to combine sciences and then we started to take the sciences away. And now it looks like it's a disaster. I just got to say that because that's what I'm seeing. And I understand that you're getting ready to do something different with that. And tell me again, just in a quick minute, don't prolong things, I know people are tired, but I just need to know, what are we going to do?
Basically, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade are being separated out into three courses versus combining the two. Earth science, moving back to the high school. So they'll get a full year of sixth-grade science, a full year of seventh, and a full year of the eighth as opposed to combining it down. So hopefully we'll see that enhance the student's ability to retain the knowledge as opposed to taking a sixth and seventh-grade course over two years and an eighth-grade course, but not taking the SOL test on those until, you combine those into two years worth of work in SOL tests. So they'll have those courses kind of split back out again so you get more detailed instruction as opposed to combining into two years into one.
And the state, I was in a different division when this happened, but the state suggested that they.
I wasn't blaming Amherst, so to speak.
Divisions move that way.
I think I said, if I could find a minute in my closet, that I didn't like it in the first place.
Yeah.
Because I knew we was headed for disaster and now we're there. And I can understand what we're getting ready to do. And then my second thought is, and I'm not wanting to call our schools, but since you already put them up there, I'm still not going to call them out, but, because I just don't do that. But I think that we see that there's a situation in some of the schools that I think just need to be dealt with. I mean, I don't know, I heard what you said and I'm not changing what you're doing because I'm an instructor and I know how difficult it is. I appreciate what Dr. Wells said, this, the group that you're looking at now is the disadvantaged. And I've asked for about 25 years, exactly who is that? Not by name, but exactly who are, what group of students, what can we really do? I haven't seen anything really done, not just in Amherst, I'm talking to the whole nation. So if we implement one program after another and we still not getting that, I don't even like the word subgroup, we still not getting those students up where we want them, I don't know, I need, I need another answer. I just don't understand it because it keeps coming back of this group. And that would be like if I had a bad crop, I'm going to change it next year. I'm just being real here. Because I've been sitting here all these years trying to figure out what, not just Amherst, what is it that we need to do? And someone brought a good point tonight, I don't know which one of you, maybe Dr. Patron. There are barriers.
Significant ones.
There are, but let's just see if maybe we could just tear one or two down so that we can bring our achievements up. I mean, I've been here and I was watching all the news with all the different counties and cities talking about their scores. And I'm appreciative, Dr. Wells did excellent. That's not this, we're not criticizing anybody. And I really don't want to deal with pre-pandemic anymore. I want to deal with right now. I would like to see before I get off this board that we bring some of these things, just let's us be the, let's Amherst be different. There shouldn't even be a subgroup problem if everybody wants to work. And then I remember, Ms. Childers brought up some question about teachers and all that, we're not going there. But let's just say, in the schools that need help, it's not the first time, that we really get down to the nitty-gritty. I don't want anybody to work any harder, but let's just really see what is it that's causing the problem and solve it. I don't see no other way to do it. I don't see, I mean, I know everybody's going to be upset with me, but I don't see any other way to do it because I don't understand, I do, I understand socioeconomic disadvantages, I'm not stupid. And they do present a barrier sometime, but that's our job to figure out, how to break it down. I mean, we got free lunch, that's good, check, check. We got free transportation, check, check. We say we got all these programs and we just looked at another one tonight. And we had three or four prior to that. Can we get that group up to where we need them? Can we get parents to understand that their kids, I hope somebody's listening to me tonight, have to come to school? That when they miss, I even talked to one of mine today, if you keep missing, I got to let you go. But we don't do that here. But here's what I'm talking about, you're missing something. And do parents really understand this absentee situation is relative to the state situation? Do they understand? Because I have been out and about during the day and I've seen kids, I'm like, and I don't know, I'm saying, aren't you supposed to be at school? And they say, oh, no, I ain't going today. I don't get it. I was going to ask this question, I'll be through. I won't talk when it's my turn. Has this, we got some sickness in there, has absentee looking thus far? Just off the top of your head, don't call that no more number.
Actually, it's really good.
We've been posting it on Facebook every day.
I know, I don't read it, but purposely don't, but how are we looking, how are we looking?
All of our schools have had more than like 92% and above average daily attendance, so it's actually looking pretty good so far.
I like it, I like it, I like it. I don't want everybody to come to school sick, don't misunderstand. I'm just seeing that we can get through this fall, winter, flu, whatever's going around, everything. Tick bites, everything out there, just can we get, make it? But, but aside from that, that's just something else to stay through and to get on my nerves. But individually, individually, can we possibly, can Amherst look at solving slowly some of these barriers?
And Ms. Leggins, I think with what, how Dr. Norman's team is going into the schools right now and doing individual talks with teachers about individual, and to put up individual students, hopefully those conversations will lead to what you're talking about.
Improvement.
And that's, that's the goal is by identifying these, these students with their individual needs and doing plans for them. Regardless of have IEP or not, do we have plans for these students? Are there any plans for these students, knowing where their strengths are and where their weaknesses are and being able to work with them on an individual basis? So that's kind of what the instructional team has been focusing.
And I, I'm going to leave you like this, I know we can't solve this as a whole overnight, not even maybe in a year. And it's nothing that just started, it just bothers me. Every now and then you see I got bothered because I'm trying to figure out how to help these children, my own included. Studying, working, pulling them aside. And I think if we concentrate, and it's not just for this group here, on just getting rid of few barriers, just a few. How can we, do you have a computer, do you have access to, you know, what can we really do? And then when we've done all we can do, we feel okay. We can't bring everybody, not everybody's a student, you know, I wasn't. But, but what I'm saying is.
But everybody can learn.
But what I'm saying is when I see, you know, you give us the data and you do very good on how y'all do it. And so when we look at every year, usually, I got one of these in the closet from last year. Now, I've looked at it and I've looked at it again, I'm thinking, some good, so let's praise the good. Don't misunderstand for the green, I'm excited. Ms. Crawford, don't pass out back there. I'm excited and I'm excited for all our schools. And we started this new word here a few years ago, growth. And we got hung up on that. I want to see growth, but can we just go off the top every now and then? Can we just say boom?
Boom, there we are, I'm done. We're going to try, we're trying very, very hard. Thank you, Ms. Leggins.
Or anyone else.
All I can say is you know you're in trouble when she's going after you.
That's not it. Don't speak for me, Childers.
Don't speak for me. She's done that speech for 13 years that I've been here.
But I'm done. I want me a big rocking chair when I leave, I'm going to rock like this, but I want the scores up when I get out of here.
Yes, ma'am.
Great job, a lot of data, a lot of data. And I hate to ask for more data, but I would love to see the report that I'd ask for with the, kind of the stoplight. I think that would help some of us board members. You know, just give us that, that high-level view in a quick glance of what's going on, you know, within the PLCs so we can see from one grading period to the next or, you know, one month to the next.
How.
How our kids are moving, you know?
Progressing.
Again, for me, my vision is, is I want to see kids going from, you know, red to yellow and from yellow to green and see those numbers as they're moving real-time.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so one question I had, as I'm looking at the reports, when I look at, I'll just, any of the schools. If I look at current year, it says passing 265, total test 386. How, is that 260, that's not 265 students. How many, how do we know how many students are taking the test? And so I was just trying, are some people taking the test like four times?
No. Mr. Crawford, can I use your school as an example?
So if you'll go to Amherst County High School. And flip to the first page on English academic achievement. If you look over midway through where it says total test.
Yes.
The current year total test, he gave 643 English achievement test during the school year 2023, 2024. 571 passed, which gave him an 88.8% level one. Does that make sense?
Yes. So does every, like, every student take the test that has to take the test? Or do we have students that aren't showing up?
We have students that take the test multiple times. We have students that did not pass the test in previous years, that they're considered term grad and they have to take it. And whichever year they take it in, that's the year it goes in under accreditation. So if you go to... Let's do Amherst Elementary. Mandy won't kill me.
Not tonight.
And let's do math. If you look over, because elementary is different, so she had 132. All students take a math test. She had 85 of those students actually outright pass it. She had eight, meaning that got recovery, meaning that they failed it the first time, but they got so close to passing that they took it again and passed. And then they got 16 students actually showed growth from the beginning of the year when they were given a test to the SOL test at the end of the year, they did better, they didn't pass, but they showed growth. And that gave her an 82.5 total pass rate, which was a level one.
Okay, thank you. All right, next question, on the AP courses.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, there it is, AP data. I'm trying, I'm trying to understand when I, let's say I go down to biology, it says zero, zero. What do the first, what does the first number mean? Is that how many took the test or how many passed?
It would be how many passed and how many taken.
Okay, all right, thank you. And that's consistent down the line there.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your hard work and thank you for the binder, it's huge. But it's making more sense every year.
Thank you. I have a fantastic staff who puts this together for me.
Okay, anything else from the board? Ms. Thompson, I hear you clicking around, is that, you trying to chime in?
Yes, Mr. Terry. I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. One, I know that we are going to have someone come in and audit our science program. Who is going to be doing that audit?
That's the nature, nurture.
Nurture by nature.
By nature, explore nature by nurture. And they're, Ms. Rakey, but they do, they do that program. She'll come in and start working, talking to our staff and so forth about what's going on. So that's part of their program. And then they'll give us feedback on what they, what they determine.
And who are they through?
They're independent, she, it's, Explore Nature by Nurture is the company. And so they're not through anyone.
They're not affiliated with anything. It is someone who has taught science before in the state of Virginia, who's gone on to actually train new standards across the division, across the state and has a company that goes in and supports teachers trying to learn the new five Es on teaching science methodology now for the state.
And do we know other folks that have used the program?
Well, it's not a program.
Well, the company?
The company, yes, ma'am. We have three divisions that she gave us. We've spoken to two of them where it's been effective. It's more of seeing what our data shows, looking at our curriculum, talking to our teachers about labs. If we're not giving students hands-on, they can't take that abstract and put it to concrete representation back and forth from a test to what they're given in the classroom.
So our.
They may come back with a report that says we need more hands-on.
They may, and then we'd have to take that data and then determine how we want to incorporate that data into what we do.
So what's the cost of this?
Right at 5, $5,500?
Yes.
$4,500? I can get the exact cost for you.
Okay, and we're looking to implement changes in the science program prior to that audit?
We have, with the curriculum changes, we have to because that's coming down to us from the state, but also spreading that back out. But then what you'll be able to do is also look at how we're teaching and what we're teaching as well and give us some more insight with our teachers. So it's kind of a combined effort.
Okay. So then if they tell us we need more hands-on labs, then we need to bring in some training to train our teachers for that, provide extra resources, those types of things?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, that would be their recommendation.
Does the company provide any of that training?
She does, yes, ma'am. The company does provide the training. If we choose to do, we don't have to take her recommendations. This is just an initial audit. And what falls in line with what we're doing and how we're changing our science curriculum to meet the new standards is going to be important.
Okay, all right. Well, and I also want to say that I'm looking forward to getting my data binder. I know there's a lot in there that everybody's put in a lot of hard work. And I want to congratulate everybody for having our schools fully credited. There's lots of good news to celebrate for sure. And as Mrs. Leggins has pointed out, we, and you guys have as well, that we have some work to do. Wanted to say I appreciated Mrs. Leggins' passion to, you know, if economically disadvantaged group is where we are really struggling and what do they need? I mean, I could tell with this Dr. Patron's comments of looking at attendance, we're going beyond just, we're working for attendance for all. We're working for attendance to see what we can do to help with resources for these families. And I know that's a heavy lift, but I appreciate both the passion and the desire to dig in. So what I wanted to just bring up to the board is that some school boards actually have an academic committee to where the school board does more monitoring of the data along with the division, like on a quarterly basis, that kind of thing. And I know Mr. Childers has asked for a report, says red, green, stoplights, you know. I believe, Mr. Childers, was that on a quarterly basis that you were looking for that maybe?
I guess I was really asking for it, yeah, after each.
I guess I was really asking for it, yeah, after each nine weeks, yeah.
Yeah, well, that would be, okay. So just wanted to throw it out there. If this is something that I know that the school division is working on it, I mean, there's nothing more important that we are responsible for as a board other than academics and the success of our students, you know. If we really want to dig in, we do have some tools that we can look at, an academic committee to look at the economically disadvantaged, to look at the supports that Dr. Petron might meet. I just wanted to throw that out there because I have sensed a lot of passion, a lot of desire. And I know that several board members have talked about that in the past, so I just wanted to remind everybody of that. And also I would be interested in knowing the region, I was looking at the regional comparisons. I mean, we're struggling with that. And if economically disadvantaged is really where we're struggling, I think having economically disadvantaged numbers for each of those regions might be a good comparison for us to just sort of, you know, balance that out.
Yes, ma'am.
We can pull it.
And I just appreciate the work that everybody's done. I appreciate it. And I know that we're going to be focusing on the science and the economically disadvantaged, but I just would like to know what we as a board might be able to do to help support that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you.
Board, anything else for Dr. Norman and crew?
Okay, then I'm going to move to the next one. Thank you very much. I would like to ask Ruth Matheny to come up. She is our supervisor. Again, my staff does all kinds of things. So she's a supervisor of math, science, gifted elective and online programs. And she's going to talk to you about, this is information for you, just so that when people talk to you about the new, the new math pathway, that you have a basic understanding of what that looks like. Ms. Matheny?
Yes, so good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As Dr. Norman said, coming to talk a little bit about the new math pathway that we're going to be implementing in the 25, 26 school year. And I'll tell you a little later while I'm telling you this now, in the 24, 25 school year. So our goal of math instruction in Amherst County is really to get students critically thinking, reasoning, those problem-solving skills, to have those really deep understandings of those conceptual ideas in mathematics. And if you look at our new math standards, those ideas are really heavily emphasized in our standards. Our teachers do a great job trying to differentiate for all of the students that they serve, the most needy, but also the most not so needy, and trying to enrich them and give them opportunities to extend beyond the standards. They collaborate with our special education teachers, our gifted specialists, our math specialists, to be able to figure out what's the best way to support those students. And we also have pathways for acceleration in mathematics so that those students who are ready to excel and move on can do so more quickly than their peers. So just a little background about our current math pathway. Right now, we have grade five teachers who make recommendations for advanced math placement in middle school. During last school year, we implemented a rubric to help make sure that those recommendations were based on data, to make those recommendations for our students. And that rubric considers things like diagnostic scores, performance on achievement tests like SOLs and growth, also work habits and things that teachers are noticing in the classroom. And then they have conversations with parents about what pathway should that student move to in the middle school. So we have the traditional pathway, which is where students follow the appropriate grade level math course. But we also have an opportunity for students to take an accelerated pathway and they enter middle school as a seventh, in a sixth grader, in a seventh grade class for math. And what that means is they actually skip all of the sixth grade content, which is not so good, because there are things and skills in sixth grade that they need to have in order to be able to be successful in those advanced math courses. Those students are typically attend our summer bridge program, which occurs during our normal summer programming. It's a half a day program where they get a couple of weeks of instruction in those grade six skills that are so vital for their success in the future courses. But again, they would move into that math seven as a sixth grader, take math eight as a seventh grader, and then have an opportunity to take Algebra I at the middle school level. Amherst Middle also provides an opportunity for students to make an additional jump and have an opportunity to take geometry at the middle school level. So a couple of things, acceleration is a great thing for students who are ready for that, but our current model also has a little bit of limitations. Number one being that summer bridge requirement has an impact on families. And so we don't want students to feel punished because they're going to be accelerated to have to attend a summer bridge because it is a significant commitment and families are trying to go on vacations and spend time together during their summer break. The other problem that we're seeing with our summer bridge program is that it's only a couple of weeks long. So imagine trying to fit a whole year's worth of curriculum in a couple of weeks, half a day, and you can anticipate how that affects students' retention of those skills. As I mentioned before, those students are skipping all of those math six concepts, which are crucial for success in later courses. And we're noticing that with our SOL scores, as we're digging in through all of that data, that those foundational skills are something that our students are missing. We're also seeing some SOL score discrepancy be in our middle school scores, especially for sixth grade, for example, because all of our advanced students are skipping sixth grade and they don't participate in that particular SOL. And then lastly, as I mentioned before, geometry for face-to-face instruction is only offered at Amherst Middle School, which means that our students at Menelison are not having that same opportunity. So what we did earlier last year is we had a committee come together comprised of our middle school administrators, middle school math teachers, math specialists, math coach and our division-level staff, looking at how can we address all of those limitations and make it better for our students? And so we have determined that this particular pathway adjustment was needed. So in the new pathway, we're going to continue to have that traditional path for students who are ready to take the grade level appropriate math, but also two different types of accelerated paths. So the first one is the accelerated path. And in that path, students would take honors math six, which would have all of the math six concepts and part of math seven. The next year, they would take honors math eight, which would have all of the math eight and the other half of that math seven curriculum that they would need to be successful, allowing them to get to Algebra I at the end of the year. The third pathway there is still a promoted pathway that lets students get to geometry at the middle school. And how that would work was the, would be those students would take an honors math seven course, which would have the most critical content in sixth grade, eighth grade and all of seventh grade together so that they're not missing the necessary pieces from either sixth or eighth grade in order to transition successfully to Algebra I and geometry. So this actually helps us in a number of ways. Number one, that promoted pathway again integrates that content for students so that they get the most critical information needed to be able to move forward quickly. Our advanced pathway actually compacts the curriculum into two years instead of skipping a whole content area for students, which is going to be very beneficial for teaching those concepts together. And we've actually very strategically determined what skills are going to be in math six or the honors math six and the honors math eight. For example, if we know in sixth grade, students are going to be needing to solve equations with one variable, the seventh grade standard is two variables, and so try to pair those together. Taking away the summer bridge program should be beneficial more for our families and their, and the students so that it's not a punishment that they have to come during the summer because they are taking an advanced course. We're also hoping that this would be a better way for students to retain that information rather than just a few weeks of instruction during the summer. This also will allow our students to participate more evenly in SOL tests. For example, instead of completely skipping grade six SOL, the students in honors math six would take the sixth grade SOL. The students in honors math seven would take the seventh grade and honors math eight would take the eighth grade. So hopefully that would make our SOL scores a little bit more balanced in that nature. And then lastly, that updated pathway would help provide more equal access for students at Menelison to have a face-to-face instructor for a geometry course. Why am I bringing it to you now? As I mentioned before, there's a lot of things that we have to put in place this school year in order to prepare for this transition for the next school year. So we've done a lot of upfront work already with that committee, talking about what the limitations were, how can we address that? We've already looked at creating those rubrics, using those expertise in what skills would better match with what course. Right now, we're in the stages where we need to share with stakeholders so that everybody has a good understanding of the opportunities for advanced coursework in math at the middle school. We also need to be able to have that information communicated, especially with our counselors and our grade five teachers, because in December and January, our grade five teachers have to begin that recommendation process. And so that's when they'll start collecting all of those pieces of data that are needed from the rubric and be able to have time to actually conference with families to see what their feelings are about placement in math and be able to incorporate that into their recommendation as well. That will also give our schools time to make sure that they have everything they need to develop the master schedule, they have their appropriate staff and all of that to be able to prepare for that transition in August. So as I said before, we're hoping that this is a very positive thing for our students and their families, already receiving information from the middle school that they're excited about this opportunity for students who are ready for that acceleration. So I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Ruth, can you tell them the percentages of each group and what that would look like historically?
So we do need to update our existing rubric in order to reflect the new pathway. But if we used our existing rubric, we would have, I think, about 54% of our students would go in the traditional pathway, 36% would go in the accelerated, that middle pathway, and about 10% in that pathway that leads to geometry.
Thank you.
What was that last number?
10%.
Thank you. Board, any questions for Ms. Matheny?
Just one, but I'm not going to go on and off. No, I wasn't aware that we didn't have geometry at Menelison.
So students can take geometry through things like ad mentum, but it's not a face-to-face instructor. Which is not as good instruction when you have a teacher face-to-face.
Thank you.
Yep.
Board, anything else?
Quick question. The honors math six, if they move into honors Algebra I, they won't have any eighth grade content. Is that correct?
If they are in that accelerated pathway in the middle, they would take honors math six and then the next year take honors math eight and then Algebra I. So they still would get that grade eight. The students that would go in that.
I was talking about if they shifted over from accelerated to promoted.
Right.
And they went from honors math six to honors Algebra I.
Correct.
So I don't remember what's in math eight. So is that a critical year for Algebra I and geometry basis?
Yeah, there are several skills that are in math eight, which is something that right now in our current pathway, those students that do make that jump and skip eight entirely do have some skills, just like the sixth grade skills would be missing. But I think if we're looking at that pathway, it's going to be a very small amount of students that would be able to jump from honors math six straight into Algebra I. And we'd have to have, again, data to support that decision.
Well, I guess I'm still having concerns if that math eight's critical, that we're not giving that to them.
So in the honors math seven, they're getting some of those math eight skills in the math seven course, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I'm talking about going from the green box over to the purple box.
Yeah, we would not anticipate that would be very many students at all.
And I would assume the Algebra I teacher would know and they would have to supplement.
Correct, just like we would in any other math course that we're teaching to be able to differentiate for our students' needs.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Board, Ms. Childers?
Any other school divisions using this model for math?
Yeah, so we looked at several, I can't remember the name of.
Prince William?
Prince William, I think, or Prince George, one of the others. It's something that other divisions are doing this way. And if you actually look at the proposed legislation that's coming down for Virginia for math, they actually are looking at models similar to what we're trying to move to.
And does this bring up any concerns over the number of sections and teachers that we're going to need to facilitate this many classes?
Yeah, so we have actually, our middle school administrators were kind of the first ones to say, can we do something like this? We want to do something like this. And that's going to be important that we're doing things now so that they have ample time to prepare course recommendations, determine how many students need to take which courses and which sections for that.
It may require a, like at Menelison, for example, a middle school teacher to get the geometry endorsement. Because you might, you probably would have just one section of that, but you need to, so it may have some things there are supplemental endorsements we have to get, but overall.
But we think with the current number of staff that we have in place today, we won't need to grow that in order to implement this based on the number of sections that you'd have to generate in order to meet those three pathways.
So if you, every middle school student has to take math, so there's still the same number of slots, it's just where we put those teachers and which courses that they take.
Sure, but if you're taking the same number of students and you put them in smaller groups, because now you break it into three pathways, you could potentially end up with smaller classes, meaning you're not getting a full class, whereas in the old pathway you would.
I see what you're saying.
Right. Just something to be cognizant of.
Right.
You know, when you implement something like this is that there are other ramifications. And I can imagine coming back to the board and said, oh, we're going to need another teacher.
And I, I don't envision that those small classes are, will have that many sections of small classes. But I will take a look at that when we start going through the schedules.
I'm not opposed to it. I think, you know, this is a much better plan and it will, it'll allow us to target what I think we need to do. We need to work on our struggling students and we need to also provide a pathway for our advanced students. We want them all to grow.
Exactly.
I think that's what this helps us do.
Agreed.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. I mean, Ms. Matheny.
Ms. Care, I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
You just talked with us a few minutes ago about science and the impact on the SOL test at the high school for verified credit. And then the students didn't have to pass the test, but they had to take the course. Would that affect, would this math curriculum affect that if they're taking Algebra I geometry at the middle school and I'm assuming they'll take Algebra II at the high school?
Yeah, so we, we do have students already doing this at Amherst Middle and for Algebra I at, at both middle schools. And those students actually continue on to advanced coursework and even have opportunities to participate in early college governor schools, so those types of opportunities.
Okay, so when they get to the high school and they're taking Algebra II, I'm assuming is what the promoting group would be taking.
Correct.
That would be their verified credit for graduation at the high school level?
Correct.
Well, it would be.
Well, it would be for federal accountability, correct?
It would be for federal accountability. You would.
But would they have to pass it for?
No, ma'am, they did not have to pass it. They just have to take the test.
But the majority of these students were trying to get into gov school and are in college, so it's conducive, it's best for them to pass it because that goes towards where they're trying to get to.
Okay, so we're not going to be in a situation like what you described earlier with science.
Exactly. The situation with science was the traditional course that all students were having to, to pass. This is our most advanced students who want to be able to have those other more advanced opportunities that they need to be able to pass those courses for.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
All right. Now, thank you, Ms. Matheny. Did that right that time.
All righty.
I'd still me, I'm sorry.
Dr. Norman.
I know, I just want to go home and go to sleep. The next thing I have on the agenda is class size. After our first 10 days of school, I always give you a pupil teacher ratio of where we stand. It has to go up on our website sometime in October. I think it has to be up by November 1st, but we always bring to you so we can determine what that class size ratio is because. But we always bring to you, so we can determine what that class size ratio is, because, and it's very specific for elementary, because our elementary has to meet federal requirements, because we take all Title 1, all of our elementary schools are Title 1 schools. So you have a requirement for school-wide ratios for each of the schools under Title 1 in the federal monitoring system, and then you also have largest class sizes that you can have at each of those schools. So I want to bring to your attention what we are currently at for each of our elementary schools. You also have the secondary PTR that's available. We'll come back with this again at the next board meeting, because that's the one that'll go up on the website. But I need to bring to your attention three schools in the elementary area where we are not meeting, or we're very, very close to being out of compliance with our federal allotments. And because of this, it causes us financial, we have to meet compliance issues, or it, or we lose funding, basically, eventually, that would happen. So Amherst Elementary, if you look at that, the school-wide ratio for Amherst Elementary as a Title 1 school is 19, and the largest class size can be a 24. If you look across at kindergarten and first grade, and then fifth grade, you're sitting at 22 as a largest class, so you're, get two more students in fifth grade, and you're already out of compliance. If you look, they are under the ratio of 18.71, which is their school-wide ratio that needs to happen, but they are very close to hitting 19. And so I'm very concerned about that school and the supports that we need to give there to meet those guidelines. If you look at Central Elementary, all the way over on the other side, on the right-hand side, their school-wide ratio is for 15, I mean, for, they are currently sitting at 15, their school-wide ratio because of their free and reduced and their Title 1 status is 16, it's not 19, it's 16. And then their largest class can be 21. They're currently, I got serious concerns in regards to first grade, because they just added in several students today, and two of them were in first grade. So right now, of the three classes, all of them are sitting at 20, and one of them is sitting at 21 already, so we're very concerned about that as well. If you look down at Madison Heights, Madison Heights is already out of compliance for the school-wide ratio, they're sitting at 16.14, and their school-wide ratio under the federal Title 1 requirement is 16. So we're already out of compliance for that particular school. Their largest class can be 21, and if you'll notice, they hit the mark on that. The only class, grade level that they're close is for grade level 3, but because their school-wide ratio is so low, because they are our most neediest school, they are 96% free and reduced lunch, currently population of economically disadvantaged at that particular school. So there needs to be some support given to that school immediately, actually, to be in compliance with the federal government and the state. And Dr. Wells, if you would like to add anything?
So basically, what we'll probably need to come to you with, as we look at our numbers, is probably some instructional assistants at those schools to offset the numbers, to make sure we have our, we're balanced there. We might not need teachers, we don't need to split a class, because we don't have enough to split a class, but we might need to add some instructional supports to those. So we will be looking at those numbers and seeing what grade level we need, and I will be in touch with you regarding possibly the need to add an instructional assistant at one or more of those three schools.
And all of this falls under our standards of quality, so we really don't have much of a leeway of not doing something. We can either give them a teacher, or we can give them instructional aids to support in those classes. And my recommendation to the superintendent was, right now, not to split classes, but to provide instructional aids. Do you have any questions in regards to this? We will bring this back to you next month, but he'll be calling you next week.
Board?
Yes, sir. So thinking about Madison Heights, with the numbers that they already have now, how many IAs do you think we need realistically to help alleviate any concerns?
Right now, I'm only asking for one because of the current class sizes that we have at each of those grade levels. My closest is third grade, but I have some significant concerns with our kindergarten and first grade, just making sure we provide supports into that, those environments. Those are our most neediest right now, so I would, I'm asking for one right now, but we're gonna see how that works in regards, but we may be coming back to you.
So then I guess the next question will be from Ms. Lakonic, is how is that gonna affect our budget?
Sorry, thank you.
That's usually the follow-up question. So, I mean, it is gonna impact our operating budget. That's one of the things that, you know, we're looking at, any salary lapses, we have some vacancies that will, you know, we, hopefully, we're gonna fill, but you're gonna have some salary savings there. So we're just gonna be looking at all those areas and pockets of funding that we can shift to cover those needs for the students.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So an instructional aid can actually go into this formula and help reduce the ratios that we're required to be in compliance?
Yes, ma'am. We've done this-
So our instruct, I'm sorry?
We've done this several years that I've been here, where we didn't have enough to split a class, and what we're required to do is provide support during the core content area.
Okay. So on these ratio numbers that we're seeing, pupil teacher ratios, do we have our current IAs figured into those ratios?
Yes, ma'am. Well, the, these are teachers, so one of the options when you go over your compliance requirements is you can split the class into a teacher, or the state lets you submit for the waiver, which we'll do that, we do that every year, and add in an instructional aide, another person to assist in the classroom that's the largest classroom. So it doesn't go into our teacher-pupil ratio, but it does go to support the kids in the classroom.
So that's an option that you have if you're over?
Yes, ma'am.
I see. All right, thank you.
Board, anything else for Dr. Norman?
Okay, I got one more thing.
Come on, Dr. Norman, go to us.
Right now, I'd like to call Dr. McGinnis. Dr. McGinnis provides, he oversees our entire summer academies programs, and he has done a phenomenal job the last several years, making sure we get kids into our summer programs and showing some really good gains with them. So I've asked him to be very brief, but to talk to you and give you an update in regards, love you, Marvin, an update on our summer academies. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, let me say, good evening to you all, but I want to thank you for two things. First of all, for giving us the funds to expand our summer school. We got to add our pre-K and the kindergartners, but we also had the opportunity to expand our Power Scholar program to the middle school, which was, as you will see from the data, helped a lot, but we still got some things to work on. I also want to thank the transportation, the nutrition, the leadership we had without them, I tell you, it couldn't have got done. This was the best summer school ever, and I've been doing this for eight or nine years, and this was awesome. You have two reports. Do not try to compare the two. What you get on one is that information you get from the Y. They do a lot of surveys and information, and as you see from that report that I've given you there, it's just a handout, it's not in a stack, where they look at professional development that we give our teachers, and then academic growth, which they have 1.5 a month for reading, and three months of growth for math. Now, that's just for the students who were in the Power Scholar program pre-K 8. The other report that you got that's on the slide that includes, as Ms. Matheny was saying, those advanced students who was taking the math. So this PowerPoint includes every program that we do during the summer, where the other one was just for the Y, is just for the Power Scholar program. So that's the difference in the number of scholars, where you see. So, starting off here, overview, we have this every year, where we have more students who preregister than show up. So just looking at pre-K 4, we had 204 registered, but only 151 of those students actually showed up. Rising 6th through 8th grade, we had 171 registered, 132 actually participated. High school is totally different, they knew they had to come, so they were there, but we had a great number at the high school. So I wanted to break it down for this report into, so we can see, we had three sites running, one in Madison Heights, one at Central, and of course, a secondary at Manellison Middle School. Now, just because you see Madison Heights up there, that's three schools in one, okay? So that's all the South Side school, Central is all the North Side elementary schools. So it's not just Central. So you have Central, you have Amherst, and you have Temperance. And on the other side, Madison Heights, Elon, and Amelon. So those are the three schools. So you see for reading, we had a, for Madison Heights, had a 13.8 point growth, which begs to turn out to be about two months of growth for all the programs. For Madison Heights, for math, we had 3 through 5, had about two-month growth. Central, if you look for reading, K 2, we had a minus 2.9 point drop in that group. Rising 3 through 5, we had a six-month growth. In math, 3, 5, we had a three-month growth. Now, understanding, pre-K, even though we had our precares, we only did reading with them, so we focused just on reading. So if you look at the combined, two sites together, we had 19 students who showed no growth, but once again, they didn't lose anything. And the purpose of that was to maintain not to lose learning, so to curb that at learning loss. We had 22 who showed negative growth, which was a 14% of the program. So in math, we had eight students who showed zero growth, and 24 showed a negative growth in the elementary program, which is about 15% of the total. Looking at the middle school, what happened? She disappeared on me. Okay, at the middle school. The middle school, I said, was really a surprise. We had several programs going on. We had 114 students in person, 16 students, basically, online attendance, and that basically came from our Math Bridge program, which Ms. Matheny was talking about. And you see the breakdown of the students, we had basically 45 students who participated in that advanced math program. 42 of the 45 basically increased their scores. Three of the students that came face-to-face basically had lost 23 points. And one of those, I think, was basically due to attendance, which is another issue. Those virtual ones who had to do it, we had to work with the parents, they didn't want the kid to miss, but they were going on vacation, so they had a virtual, and they did meet with the teacher once a week. But 10, we had 16, attended 16 made growth. One student stayed the same, and about five students lost about 11 points from that growth. You look at the reading and math on the left-hand side, we had about a five-month growth, students who showed growth, 14 students who basically showed no growth, negative growth. Math, we had eight students who showed eight-month growth, two students stayed the same, and about nine students who showed negative growth at the middle school. So, high school, there's a lot going on at the high school, a lot of programs going on. And so I'm, as you see there, what you see in the participant outcome thing is, these are the students in that column which says outcome who took the class and passed the class, okay? And you can look through that. If they was to take an SOL for a verified credit, that's what you will see in the for right column, and that will tell you there. I want to point to this one on the economic and personal finance, that's where we had our largest group, and of those 103 that attended, 100 finished the course, 86 of them went on to take the Ys to earn CTE certification, which was great. And so there you, you can also see the breakdown of your other courses such as geometry, as we was talking about. We did have three who took it in summer school, of those three, all three passed the class. So you can see the outcome there, and that's for your information. Work keys, this is basically, once again, for certification, but it's also for verified credit. Student can take the business writing, we had 19 out of 21 who passed the class, and they actually got to replace that writing test for verified credit. Workplace document, we had six pass out of six for CTE certification. And for them to get CT certification, they have to pass all three, workplace document, applied math, and graphic literacy. And those are the numbers you see of those students who completed each one of those and passed and got CT certification or verified credit. So in summary, we had 489 students who participated in our summer program. Our summer program was 17 days, from June 10th to July 3rd, it went from Monday through Friday, and there was one vacation day was in there. Middle school was half-day, they went from 8:30 to 12:30, and the elementary schools went from 8:30 to 3 o'clock, because they had the enrichment piece that they went with it, go with it. David Average was, as you would see, that goes along with the other report, was above 80%. So the students did come, but there was still that 20% that didn't come, so we also have to look at that. Outcome overall, about 62% of the students showed growth, K 8, 95% of the high school, of course, passed. And I gave you two reports that you see, one's a reading report, should look like this, just should have got, one's a math report. I wanted you to see that for every student that made negative growth, this report was printed and given to each school to give to the teacher of that student, so they had information to start off with for the school year. And if you see, it gives detailed information of the skill that the kids would be challenged by, but not frustrated by. So, okay? So I gave you an example of a reading when an end of a math, so every kid who did not make growth, or made negative growth, received this report at their school. And the parents also received copies, okay?
Can I add something to that, just to make sure everybody's understanding what he's talking about, negative growth? So in the course of a summer, when a kid ends out the school year, starts the new school year, on average, at elementary and into middle school, a child will regress and lose about nine weeks worth of knowledge, if that makes sense. So they, they will always have learning loss over the summer, it's just called summer learning loss. It usually adds up anywhere from two and a half to three months of learning loss, and what you try to do in a summer program is cut that learning loss. And so even to show a 12% negative growth is actually good, because that's, they didn't do the 60% negative growth, which would be what would normally happen in a summer for students who struggle, and that's the students we want to come to our summer academies.
And they, they receive a star pre-test and a star post-test. And so what you see the numbers here, only those students who actually stayed in the program and completed the end of test, because we had 45 students, as you see, that didn't come back or miss the end test, so they can be figured into this information. So, any questions? We got some work to do, but all in all, it was a great summer program. Thank you.
Board, any questions for Dr. McGinnis?
No, it's cool.
No, it's cool. What a service to our community and to our students that take advantage of it and really, you know, you get what you put in. And it's amazing. The high school students part was super, super impressive. And then being compared also with your grade school to average learning loss. The benefit as a struggling learner to not be as far behind, it's like if you're swimming across upstream, but maybe you're not as strong as someone else. If you're able to stay in the stream over the summer, you're not going to have drifted as far back and be further back. So that's really cool. That's just a huge support. Thank you.
And I want to thank our teachers. We had a big shout-out of teachers and instructional assistants who showed up to help with this summer, who did an outstanding job. So I want to give thanks to them also.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. McGinnis.
Dr. McGinnis, you'll have to ask to go first next time.
Yes, that's all I got tonight.
Dr. Norwood is now done for the evening. So now we go to Student Services, Mr. Neighbors.
Well, one second. Mr. Chair, I know this is out of order, but could we possibly move to our student reps so that they could do their presentation and maybe go home before 10 o'clock?
That's fine with me.
Are you guys ready?
Hello, my name's Denasia Brown, and I'm a senior at Amherst County High School. This is my second year as a member of the tennis team, and I'm a part of the Amareco Show Choir. I am also part of the ECMC Scholars Program, which is a scholarship program that you participate in your junior and senior year. And upon completion of the program, you get a $6,000 scholarship. I work at Hardee's in Madison Heights on weekends, and I also have two siblings who attend Amherst County High School. They are involved in the band and theater programs. After graduation, I went to attend Radford University for four years and majored in nursing. Ultimately, my goal is to be a pediatric nurse and work with sickle cell children.
Okay, great.
Hi, my name's Will Carver. Born and raised in Amherst. I went to Temperance and Amherst Elementary, and then Amherst Middle, and now Amherst High School. So I'm very Amherst. Um, I try to be really involved in the high school. So I'm one of five now, kids. So I have a lot of siblings. I've been the captain of soccer last year and this year, but I've played varsity since freshman year. I'm the president of NHS, of FCA, and of the 12-Men Club. I'm also youth representative for the EDA for Amherst County, and my plan's after high school. So I want to go to Liberty University and pursue a degree in some sort of psychology or social work, maybe forensics. I want to work with human trafficking investigations, so.
So now I'm going to talk about some of the upcoming events at the high school. So today, we had our college fair, where the juniors and seniors were allowed to go this morning. The cafeteria was pretty packed. There were a lot of colleges there, and I know the students really enjoyed being able to talk to the college reps and hear about the admissions requirements and the admission process. I know I very much enjoyed getting to talk to the representatives. On September 20th, we have our senior tailgate. I'm personally very excited, and I know other students are too. We're going to be participating in activities like jean-making. If y'all haven't seen those, like seniors make jeans with their graduation year, and they like put little patches and stuff on them. Super cool. In August, we had our first senior breath fix, which was really fun, and we got to hear from our class officers. And we have another one coming up on September 18th. And our back-to-school night is September 25th, which is also senior college night, which gives the parents and the students opportunity to talk to our college representatives. So I hope a lot of people turn out.
Most of mine have to do with sports, because that's what I'm pretty involved in. So, um, we have our first home football game next Friday, so not tomorrow, but the next week, September 20th. We're super excited about that, especially because I'm the president this year of 12 Men. And that's just, everybody at Amherst loves good Friday night lights. There's also was a JV football game tonight. And, yeah, so we've had football games, but they've been away. So we look forward to our home games and volleyball's been playing too. I know they had back-to-back games this week. I think they had another one tonight, at least JV did. Golf is also underway, golf and cross-country, both. I know Caitlin Baxter's done incredible for our golf team. She's really been standing out. I've heard that not only from people at our school and people at other schools, but her records do show for that. And Amerson Bryant has also done incredible for cross-country, winning different track meets and stuff like that. And so what we wanted to say at the end is, between us both, we were discussing, one of our like collective goals that we're focused on this senior year is we want to increase the pride within the students for Amherst, but also for Amherst County, not just the high school, but also the county. Sort of almost want to eliminate those comments where it's like, it's just Amherst when something happens. We, you know, it's kind of something we get tired of hearing, and so we're going to do our best and work with you guys as well. And hopefully, we can, we can get some more pride for Amherst County from the students and then from the community too. So thank you.
Board, anything for our student reps before they exit, if they desire to?
Mr. Terry, I'm excited to see you, Ms. Brown, Mr. Carver, and to hear what you're going to be sharing about the school. I love, um, increase the pride in Amherst County. As a relative, as a very new person to this area, I love this area, and I am so on board with. Everyone else needs to know how amazing this area is and how amazing the people are. So I look forward to your efforts, and I hope it's catching.
Absolutely, we're excited.
And don't be shy if you're here and you have work you had to do. You know, there are times you can do that. You don't have to sit and, so, you do what you got to do. We need to take care of you guys. So, that's why we're here. So.
Board, anything else for our students?
Thank you. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That's right.
Glad you got home and get some sleep.
That's right. Get some for me.
Mr. Carver, you're going to really appreciate the EDA board now.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, y'all. Be careful. Okay, Dr. Wells?
Yeah, Mr. Neighbors. All right, I'm actually hoping for the same deal now, once I finish speaking.
Such luck for you, my friend.
I don't know. I think that's a system we should look at right there. All right, I wanted to bring to the board this evening, this is actually a companion report that we received. So what we talked about in June, our performance report for special education, the 14 different indicators that we have to report data to the state, or the state has that data that they report to us. We also get a follow-up in the fall, and this is that, our local determination matrix. What they do is they take those results, all those reports we got in June, and they put that together with compliance. So they actually go back and audit, and they make sure we gave them the correct data. We gave them that in a timely fashion. We reported everything that we were supposed to report and met all of the requirements of all of those various processes that we have. Very happy to report, it doesn't sound very exciting, but Amherst County meets requirements. I assure you, that's the highest level. We can't do any better than meets requirements. We were able to get 39 out of 40 points, so our graduation rate, which we saw that dip with COVID, we talked about in June, that took that point off. So we're very excited about being back at 40 next year, and we see that graduation come back to what we are used to. But kudos to my team here at the school board office. But a tremendous amount of thanks to our teachers out in the school buildings, who are the ones that are actually doing the things that generate this data, that support our ability to help be compliant as Amherst County Public Schools. This is really a reflection of that Student Services team and the tremendous work that goes in every single year to that. I would be more than happy to answer any questions the board might have. But this again, like what we talked about in June, shows that when it comes to special education, whether it's compliance or results, we're certainly on the right track in Amherst.
Board, anything for Mr. Neighbors?
Very encouraging.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Gallagher in Human Resources.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Hopefully, HR will be relatively short and sweet this evening. So you do have your vacancy memo in front of you. One positive, knowing that we are likely going to have to add a paraprofessional, at least in one of our elementary schools, is that the number on that list there of vacancies is down to one, actually. So we had hired the other. So there's one paraprofessional open currently, in addition to the one that we'll now have to hire. And we do have interviews set up with two. So there's a little bit of promise there. Hopefully, that'll work out. We keep trying to churn out these interviews, and we've had some pretty strong candidates, fortunately, recently. And we have hired one bus driver as well since this report was written. But other than that, that's there for your reflection, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Board, anything for Mr. Gallagher? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Dr. Wells?
Since we've already had student reps, let's go ahead and get Superintendent Matters. First, for me, the tailgate's coming up. So we have a tailgate's the 20th of September, which is the secondary schools. Then we have one on October 4th, which is a community, which is the One Through Dead Foundation and Show Up Amherst. And then the 11th is the last one, which is mainly focused on elementary schools. For them to come, y'all invited to all, but those will be the dates. We'll send that out an email to you, just make sure you have that, so you know. But the first one is next week. We also have the VSBA president. He has agreed to join us, and he will be joining us on the community tailgate on October 4th. And he'll be here around 3 o'clock. So the thought process for that, as many of you can be here to join us as possible, we'll meet at the high school, kind of show him around the high school a little bit. And then if you would like to talk with him some, then he'll stay for the tailgate and possibly seven, the football game, then he'll head back home. But he'll be here that afternoon. But we invited him to come out and just, he's trying to see all the schools in the state. So we thought we'd get him to see the construction at the high school as well as that. And then, again, if you're able to meet with him, you're invited to that afternoon, before and during the tailgate. Our show-up day is September 27th. And again, that will be when we will have the events throughout the county for our show-up day. I know if your school's got their own little event taking place, you're welcome to come join and go around and see the schools. We will have a schedule for you as far as who's doing what and when, if there are specific times things are going on. I know Amherst Middle have something that morning with the law enforcement and their community public safety folks there. But every school has their own activities, but we'll have that list for you to share with you prior to. So if you want to go out on that Friday, you're more than welcome to. We had the Wellness Fair will be at Amherst County High School this weekend. It'll be Saturday morning. Dr. Petronas, from 10 to 2 at the high school. It'll take place in the cafeteria. So if you want to come to that, you're welcome to participate in that and just come and visit there. Yesterday, again, was September 11th, and we had our school's fight the freedom flag. And WSET did a nice little article on Central Elementary School. If you haven't seen it, we can send the link to that, but it's on the WSET website. And they did a nice little story there, but every school had the flag, and every school had some type of event going on during the day in regard to September 11th. Constitution Day's coming up, and we'll get with the high school on that, and they'll sign their usual form up there and get that done. So we'll get with Mr. Crawford on that and get that, make sure that's taken care of. The VSB Annual Convention, if you would like to go, let us know. I know some of you have already signed up, but if you want to go to that, it'll be, I don't have the dates in front of me, but it's in October, and we'll get the dates to you, but November, excuse me, the end of, middle of November. So we'll go to that. We'll be there. And I know Ms. Legan's going, I know I'm going. I think Mr. Childress, you said you were going to go, so 20th through the 22nd of November. So if you'd like to join us, you're welcome to. And Ms. Legan is getting recognized for her years of service. Board of Supervisors presentation, just overview of that. Thank you for those who could be here. I know that was their own work, so some of you couldn't get off work to be here. Felt that went well. They approved the recommendation that we had from our conversation with our board, with you, for the construction and the CIP change, switch over funds. So now we're in the process of getting bids and making sure that stuff goes through, that we can get all those things taken care of. And then Budget Priorities Work Session, October 24th, from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock. Just a reminder that pavement shares on your calendar. And also to make sure you bring your priorities that you have with you. If y'all want to discuss those previously, that's fine, but have those there. And then my evaluation, we talked about that, and the chair and vice chair have and I've talked for October. The question is, do you want to do it at the regular meeting? Or would we want to do that after the Budget Priorities Work Session, since it's already be here and it won't tie up a late evening? So we could do it that afternoon as well, if you want to do that. So you just let me know how you want to do that, and we'll make it happen, so. And that is all I have. Pending any questions.
Okay. Board, anything for Dr. Wells? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So it's our turn. So, Mr. Childress, you're going to lead us off, and we'll do your committee report and your personal stuff.
I promise, as usual, to keep it brief, which I never do, so I'm sorry. Actually, I don't have a report for my committee this week. I was not able to attend the meeting. I had Eric attend in my absence. In my own school division, we had a all-day principals meeting that I had to attend, so I wasn't there. But I do want to give my condolences to the Hughes family. And, you know, you know he's a special person when he's a track coach, and just getting out there and, you know, working with the kids, and especially doing something like running around the track. I love to see the recognition of the transportation people. If you've been in education very long and dealing with buses and that side of operations, there is a lot that goes on behind the scenes when you think about trying to make up these routes to get the drivers, to get everybody trained, to make sure these kids are getting where they need to get on time and to be picked up. So kudos to them for doing such a great job. And I think words mean something. And so when we do these recognitions, I'm jotting down words, these key words that, you know, these people are being recognized for. And I'm not going to read them all, but some of these that stood out to me, like talking about the students, talking about the kids being role models, respectful, determined, positive leaders. And I love this one, resilient and persevere. So just, and good citizen. And then thinking about our staff and talking about students respecting the staff. That's hard to do, to get the students to respect the teachers and staff. And then one I loved with the Elon teacher was that he did small things. And one of the things that I've learned over the years is that small deeds have big impacts. And so when we think about it, you know, people want to do big things to accomplish big things, but it's, most of the time, it's the little things that can have the most impact in people's lives. So I'm grateful for that. In fact, one of the words was impactful. I do like the information we got about the best program. I think that, you know, as many of us stated earlier, it's definitely a huge, it's a growing need, not just in Amherst County, but I think around the country for those services. And, you know, I think we need to do the best we can do to provide those kids. I think it's tricky, right, because we don't want to provide them a mechanism that's going to allow them to kind of escape and to get out of class. But I'm thankful for that and for what you're bringing to the county. And I want to say thank you to the administration. We're fully accredited, and that is a testament to all of your hard work. And, you know, that's, again, a testament to looking at this binder. I mean, there's a lot of effort that went into, not just making this, but achieving the results to get us fully accredited. So thank you very much for all the hard work.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Saunders?
No, I'm keeping it short. You always know, it's so exciting to start a new school year. We got, you know, this summer, we sort of rolled through rather quickly, but that extra 45 minutes is worth it to see these kids and the staff in there. Everybody is just so happy to be here. So that makes me feel good about it. Exciting with the building, that is. I love to see things go above ground. You know, all the data, I keep seeing that emoji with the person with the brain exploding, because that was pretty much what was going on in my mind. It was a lot of data. data, a lot, and kudos to you guys that can do that, because that is not my strong point at all. But I really like to see, we're closing the gap, yeah, we do have work to do, but I really liked how you're, you're juggling your state and your federal regulations, but you're doing it by student by student, family by family, and that individualized plan is just so impactful and so important, and I think that that's going to make the biggest difference to, to all of our students, so thank you all for doing that, and thank you all for all the time and the effort you've put into this.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Justice?
Thank you, sir. Okay, so GovSchool had our board meeting last Wednesday, and it was well-attended, one of the things that was really exciting is they've been budgeting and saving for a new scanning electron microscope, which has been installed, and we got $14,000 from Hitachi to take away the old one, which was great, and BWXT has already used the microscope, so it is already benefiting our students, our community, and that's really exciting. Let's see, another really exciting thing is that Amherst slots were all filled for junior, for our juniors this year, and we had a waiting list of qualified students that should something happen and one of our students not be able to continue, we still had options, so that's really an upward trend. We also, let's see, I think I was going to write something else down, but...
Did they ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Did they vote on whether or not they were going to increase the...
That was it, thank you, that's on this page. So, we haven't voted on it, it is likely that they're going to increase it $300 per student by the end of the year. So, yes, that's likely going to happen, but other than that, it was a pretty simple, you know, meeting, much shorter. But as far as tonight, you know, Mr. Crawford, last year 38% chronic absenteeism rate, that's what you started with, and this year 28%, that's phenomenal. I think when I, I've been to the high school a fair amount, and the, the environment and the culture overall is what you really want in a school. You see a lot of kids there, they're walking through the halls, they're interacting with their teachers, you know, and there are those that, you know, they, there are a lot of them that have their heads down too, but in general, they're just a bunch of great kids that are trying to make it through high school and aren't quite certain what's next, but they know they want next. And I'm just excited to see what's happening, I'm excited to see the benefit for our students, the implementing of the cell phones not being there, and I anticipate withdrawal from social media probably for a bit, but I, I fully anticipate that by the end of the year, you're going to see students interacting with their teachers and their fellow students far more, and there's going to be a lasting impact on their relationships and their ability to relate to other people when they leave the schools, and I'm really excited that our division's doing that, and you are, you are there guiding that ship. Dr. Norman, last year, looking at our credentialing, it was like looking at Christmas lights, and I like Christmas lights, but not so much there, and so looking at Fields of Green this year is really cool, I was inspired by the BEST, but you got to hear my comments earlier, but one of the things that stood out to me was the increments of 15 minutes. When an individual is dealing with this regulation, that's about the window of time that if they're willing and they have the tools, they can start to come back down to that place where they can interact with their world at a more successful rate, and that's a life skill that we all need, so that's just really, I'm excited to see that, and I'm going to go ahead and stop there, because I could talk a long time. Thank you, Ms. Ligon, it's your turn.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Justice mentioned something about the high school and about the students, and Mr. Crawford, I mentioned this earlier, but do you mind sharing what y'all are doing, what your students had to do for the students in Georgia? I'm sorry to prolong it, but I think it's important for y'all to hear this.
That's all right, I'll be, I'll be very quick, but I did shoot an email to our senior staff here today, so this is completely student-led, but we all know about the unfortunate events in Georgia with the school shooting that happened at Appalachia High School. Our students and our, our senior class took it upon themselves to organize our students to make cards for the students and staff of Appalachia High School, so when you walk in, all of you have been in our school, but across from the auditorium, there's that technology center that's kind of under the steps, so right there, students can go there during lunch, make a card, right now there's about over 50 cards that have been made, and I've read through some of them today, and it's, it's very touching, so that's the type of students that we have at, at the high school, so very fortunate to be there with them, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ligon?
Okay, I've already said enough, but, but for Law, we did meet last Wednesday, and we, Dr. Edwards is the superintendent in charge at this time, we, we have a lot of new board members on Law, because some of the other board members, time was up, so we had a great meeting. I did get some information, and we'll share it next time, that there are a lot of new mandates coming down for special ed, is that right, Ms. Neighbors, and so every division would be impacted by that, but I, I'm insured that we're going to pull through it, so that was a good meeting, I'd just been out at a little sports events, a lot of happiness going on in Lancerland, and I did, I apologize for missing the last meeting, I don't think I missed a meeting, but I had a, because we changed our date, I had to be somewhere that I couldn't get out of, so I did listen to everything, so I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I couldn't be here, but I did do some back-to-school events, I think Amalon is the one I've been to, is Elon coming up?
Mm-hmm.
We tried to get, yeah, I thought it was always a great time up there, so, I do want to just thank everybody again in closing, that I was, I was not on a roll, but I was just on a concern, and science, and now math, I don't even want to go there, because that's a nightmare, but I like what's going to happen in math. And Abby, I'm not trying to get on no more committees to be a commit of a committee, but I'll just put input in and let these good people do their thing, but I think all of us can contribute to that, though, if we know somebody needs help, that's what I'm talking about, we just got to get to the root of it and, and see what it is that we can do. I'm trying to do some work like that in my church with, with kids there, if they tell me they need something, I'm trying to find a resource for them, whether it be tutoring, some kind of, whatever they need, you know, but I look at what we already doing, as Ian, I just want to praise y'all for what we already doing, I learned to tell people thank you, and I want to thank the staff for this great big book again, and I'm going to sell all these when I finish, all these books, but anyway, we look forward to everything that's coming up, and, and Mr. Crawford, thanks for sharing that with us, because that was a crazy event, and I will, I will say, Chair, that I began to think about cell phones, I won't go there tonight, but it made me think about cell phones not being, especially for high school students, but that's another conversation, I'll save that, so all is well, oh, yeah, all is well, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Thompson, are you still there?
I am.
There you are.
I just wanted to, I was wanting to say welcome to the student reps, but I realized they're not there, so if they're listening, I would still like to say, welcome to, to them for our team. Also want to thank the board for allowing me to participate virtually tonight, listening to me click in and out, and for the team that made it happen, it's a new experience for me, and, but I thought it worked well. And I just want to thank everybody for all the efforts, I mean, just from expanding summer school, the behavioral and the mental health supports, looking at the class sizes, looking for smaller ones and more support, you know, just the focus on the economically disadvantaged attendance, relationship matters, and, you know, like what Mr. Crawford's talking about, making those cards, we have an awesome team, and y'all are looking at the right things, and just want you to know, as a board member, I'm all in, and we are here to do some good work, and just want to say, welcome to a new school year.
Great, thank you, ma'am. So I'll wrap this up, I, I don't want to, you know, beat a dead horse, everybody's talked about the, the things we need to focus on, and, and it's easy to look at the red ones and go, yeah, we need to focus on those, what we can't forget about are the green ones, though. Too many times we look at ones and go, hey, we're succeeding at this, and we focus on other things, then all of a sudden the things that we weren't focusing on start to slide, so we need to make sure we're looking at it as a whole, looking, you know, keeping our eye on, on the, in the, the big picture here. The focus work, we still got to do it, though, it's just the way it is. Hats off to the principals and teachers who are actually boots-on-the-ground making it happen. We can help assist, front office can help assist, but you guys are the ones boots-on-the-ground, hats off to you, so, and Mr. Porter, I have to agree with you, we have a great IT person who helps us out, I wouldn't even hardly be able to turn a computer on if it wasn't for him, so I do look forward to another great school year, I'm with Ms. Ligon, looking forward to a lot of sports this fall, like to welcome our, our student reps, hopefully we don't have to keep them out too late every, every month, but we, we want them to participate with us, bring us stuff from the high school or from any of the schools, we're here to support them, that's, they're, they're why we're here, so I'm looking forward to the, the BEST Lab information coming back and seeing progress there, we love to see how things can, can be improved, so looking forward to those new tailgates coming up this year, those were a lot of fun, getting everybody together, like I said, it's great to see the community involved with the schools and the schools involved with the community, that's, that's what we're all about, so, thank you, everyone, so, next.
Motion, Wijern.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abby? We'll talk to you later.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.